Hey Jen, can you promote TV two to a panelist so that it could get pinned with the Speaker View? Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get started here. Yeah. Good evening, we will be conducting tonight's meeting in person in the council chambers as well as in a virtual setting using Zoom for staff and public. Members of the public may list, may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave Channel 18 and online through the city's website as noted on the agenda. If you would like to participate in live public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Pastor Bill Rath of Lincoln Christian Life Center will be giving the invocation this evening and the mayor will begin the meeting immediately after, Pastor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, thank you for the privilege and city staff of being able to open the meeting in prayer, so you bow your heads with me. Lord God, thank you so much for this day. I thank you for wisdom beyond our experience in years. I thank you for grace beyond, beyond interactions that maybe don't deserve it and I just pray God that we would just be able to lead and guide this city and the direction of our city. Lord God, in a place that brings you honor and is the betterment for our city inhabitants and the people that call Lincoln home. I pray for protection for the police and fire and all those who serve us and just give the meeting to you today and we thank you for a great meeting in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you so much. All right, I have six o'clock by my watch, so I'll call the meeting to order and Ms. Skilene, can I get a real call?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Andriana.
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Here.
Councilmember Lauritson.
Here.
Councilmember Joyner.
Here.
And Mayor Sohei.
Here. All right, report from closed session.
Thank you Mayor Sohei. We did have closed session on November 3rd and this is our first time back since then, so there was no reportable action from that meeting and then from tonight's meeting as well, no reportable action.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance and Chief Adams will be giving at for us tonight. Thank you Chief. All right, we'll move forward. Agenda modifications, do we have any proposed modifications this evening? Oh no. And Mr. Scott, do you have any modifications that you'd like? All right. I also do not have any, so we'll move on to presentations. We have none this night and we'll go on to a public comment for non-agendized items. Ms. Skilene, do we have any?
There is one in the chamber. Byron Chapman, please come on.
And a mayor, councilmembers, city staff. This evening, Madam Mayor, I've been working really hard to get my thoughts down within that three-minute timeframe. If by chance I go over thirty seconds or whatever, if I could, I'd appreciate it, but I'm... Is that helping at all or excellent? Okay, let me start this out here. In the past, most of the time when I end up having a conversation about ADA issues at the council meetings, usually it's been in order to state a barrier or make a copan about removable items for the disabled community. This evening, however, I want to take a little bit different approach if I can. I want to take maybe a proactive approach. And when I say that, I mean, there's many things in my head over the years, having been disabled for thirty years. I've come quite accustomed to many of the things that are out there and a lot of the things that I think I take for granted, most people know, I come to find out that most people truly don't. And it usually is on an on-need basis because we can only put so much time in our head and things that we do. So I thought I'd start out with the basics and if this works from sound to time, I'll try to do this as well. One of the main things I think most people, when you say accessibility and the signs that are out there, usually disability parking is probably the most noticeable one that you might see and know about. However, you'd be surprised how little people know even that have the placards in the license plate as well. For example, you can only park in a disability parking place if you have a placard and or a disability license plate and it's through DMV. It doesn't mean however, that you can just, gosh, you gotta make that quick purpose and the person sitting next to you and the the stores right here and the parking places are right here and you're only gonna be there for a second. Sometimes that second makes the difference between somebody being able to pull in and not, and you just can't do it. So you don't want to take that risk. The other part of it is information that a lot of people don't know who use their placards every day. For example, when you put the placard, when you stop at the parking, disability parking space, the law requires that you hang it on the mirror there so it can be seen and not be by any particular individual predominantly for law enforcement. Because if they see that hanging in the window, then they don't have to get out of the patrol car, they're looking at it, they know it's legal and you're good to go. The police department can indeed, and I only know of this happening once to a person. They actually had the disability placard laying on the dashboard and it was legal. And they ended up getting the ticket when they got back and they couldn't figure out why they got the ticket. And if you read the DMV, it specifically states that's where you're supposed to put it. Also, it's a hazard when you in fact actually go to the point where you drive away and it's still hanging in that rearview mirror. Unfortunately, now it becomes a driving hazard and you could get ticketed for that too and you don't want to do that. The one thing that most people don't know about a disability parking space is this. There are two types. Most people think of only one. The first type is what we call the van accessible. I'm on the last item now, thank you. The one is the van accessible parking space, okay? Most people pay no attention to that at all. I myself have a van, I have a lift that goes out. A regular disability parking space only requires a five-foot access aisle. The van accessible needs an eight-foot access aisle and the reason behind that is when my lift or anyone else's lift comes out, you need that extra three feet in there, eight feet wide, in order to get in and get out when you use that ramp. Now, the deal is, is that if you have a disability placard and it's a car and you don't have a van and you don't need a lift, you can park in any disability parking place there are. However, and it's not illegal, you can park in any one of, let's say there's six parking spaces in a particular parking lot. The one thing is, you can park in any one of those if you have a car. However, only one in six is a van accessible. So if all five of those are open that are not van accessible and you choose to park in the van accessible parking space, you're totally legal to do that. However, someone like myself or anyone that has the van, when that one's taken, the other five may not even exist because you can't park, you can't get in, you can't get out. So it's just a courtesy, you're not breaking the law by doing that, but it certainly helps someone else who are able and they only have that one in six shot. So it's just, I'm trying to share information that people may or may not know and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have a hand raised. Max Moon, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Max, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks so much. So I am the President of Lincoln Skate and Bike Association and the last Parks and Rec meeting was left short. Been working on trying to find some resolution for the community members to have a safe place to skate and bike. And based on the last meeting, it was the conversation went to a city council meeting or a city council officer and Officer Williams, who had stated that that location at McBean was not safe, but the conversation was cut short. And I've been in contact with a handful of people, including Officer Williams and the, looks like the rebuttal we have to that, which was never able to move forward with, was if we were able to have whatever you want to title it, a manager or supervisor or somebody there that is a volunteer, not on the city payroll, to help keep that area safer with, you know, today's technology, that could also be done along with cameras and that would make that area safer. I propose that we don't try and reinvent the skate park. That area was fine at the time it was done. It's fine for the dog park, it's fine for the basketball courts, it's fine for the shooting range, it's fine for the horseshoe pits, it's fine for the pool area, it's fine for the kids area, it's fine for the baseball area. If we need to have some type of quote-unquote lifeguard manager or supervisor, we could work on that, but the situation has stopped and we need to continue it. So I propose, which I know you guys are unable to answer since this is just a comment, but I'm planting the seed here that we need to take a closer look at this and continue this conversation offline because all we would like is a square to roll around on, not just for the kids, but for the community that's safe since most of the fatal accidents or accidents in general by the skating and biking community is caused to traffic and automobiles off of sidewalks and next to roadways and this area provides us a safe area to to do our sport and it's important to the community and important to us. So thank you so much for your time. I look forward to chatting with maybe more of you individually. I've worked with Holly in the past, but this is something the community has reached out to me directly on. I represent hundreds of people, so look forward to working on this with you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have any further? Yes, Mayor. Albert Schreiber, please go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Mr. Schreiber, you're unmuted.
I'm muted?
Yes.
No, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. So just FYI, I can hear you guys fine. I could not hear the chief do the flag salute and I have no picture, so I don't know if it's on my end or your end. But anyway, as long as you can hear me. Albert, thank you. Albert Schreiber, Moore Road. On, I believe it was October 12th, you had a regular city council meeting and Mr. Chapman brought up a couple of things during public comment. One was a comment.
You just dropped. There you go.
Okay, am I here now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so Mr. Chapman had a question and a comment that night and of course neither one was addressed during the council meeting. His question was basically, and I'm gonna paraphrase, you know, when the city made the agreement with the county for the tax share stuff for what did the city give up in negotiations? You know, usually in negotiations, everybody has to give up something, so and like I said, I'm paraphrasing, but that's my question, but I know you're not gonna answer it, so there are questions. So my real question is, what's the protocol? Am I supposed to talk to the city manager? Mr. Scott, am I supposed to talk to Mr. Prosser? Am I supposed to talk to Mr. Bermidas? Who do I talk to to get my questions answered? And is that, do I make an appointment or do I walk in? You know, Ms. Mayor, you're always talking about the staff is happy to answer questions from the public and so I would just like to know what the protocol is for the, you know, overworked understaffed staff and how do I address their time so we don't waste time? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I would encourage you to reach out to the city manager's office. He has an assistant who I'm sure would be happy to get you scheduled to speak with him and an email would also work if you don't want to make a phone call. Do we have any further? Yeah.
I would also point out that I answered Mr. Chapman after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Which is, I think, satisfactory.
Yeah.
He's shaking his head.
By the way, but, but in addition to that, when that agreement came forward, it came to this council.
Yeah.
Chamber, it came in the form of a staff report that is available online. All of those questions have been answered multiple times. We're happy to answer.
Which, if he reaches out to Mark's office, I'm sure they're happy to hook you up with it. Do we have any further?
No, Mayor, no other hands are raised.
All right, and then, all right, so we will close public comment and move to the consent agenda as a reminder. All matters in the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or resident requests a specific item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove an item? I'm just gonna ask the public first because I know we have none being removed, but Dan has a question that we want to address before we take a vote, so are there any members of the public who are pulling an item?
Yes, Mayor, we do have two hands.
Okay.
Mr. Garabedian, which item?
Good evening, Commissioners and City Council Members. The item is the number Meadowlands item eight E, A, B, C, D, E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schreiber, which item?
Eight D is in dollar, please.
Mr. Schreiber?
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Schreiber, you're unmuted.
Yeah.
Which item? Wait, can you hear me? Yes, go ahead.
Eight D, eight D is in dollar, please.
All right, thank you. Is that it from the public? All right, so Dan, did you want to ask your question and then we'll take a motion on the remainder?
I have a general question that came to mind because of A D F. And the question is, the ground lease agreements that we have for South of Towers, do they have incremental increases within the agreement?
The ones I've looked at, yes, but I've not looked at all of them.
Okay. So some of them are, the majority of them are new. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
I motion.
I have a second?
Second.
Can I get a real call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lauritson?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner? Councilmember Andriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Yes.
And Mayor Sohei.
Yes. All right, let's go back to eight D. This was a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated submit an application to the State Department of Parks and Rec for grant funding or Prop 68 for a per capita grant program for the Lincoln Community Center. Would this be something, should we get the question? I believe that it was Albert, correct? Maybe can we get his question first to see what we...
Mr. Schreiber, please go ahead.
All right, can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yeah, my, my question is ironically, when Mr. Moon called in, this sounds like the same grant that was talked about when you're gonna build a new skate park at the at the same place where you're doing, you want to use this grant on the community center, right? It sounds like you're using, instead of for the skate park, you're using it for maintenance, so I'm just wondering if it's the same grant or this is a different grant because it seemed like the same, same rules. Thank you.
Of course. We'll kick that effort to Mr. Scott, who I think will be able to answer that for you.
Thank you for the question. No, it's the, it's the same funding agency, but it's a totally different grant. In fact, the other grant is much larger in terms of the amount of funding that would be possible and this is just a, I shouldn't say just a $178,000 grant. We, that's a lot of money and we're glad to get it. And what we have talked about doing here is is work on the community center, not the projects that are included in the other grant application.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Oh, actually, are there any other public on that?
No other hands are raised. I don't see any hands in chamber.
All right, so I'll close the public comment on that. Do any of my colleagues have questions on this item? And if not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item eight D.
Second.
All right, can I get a real call?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Andriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritson?
Yes.
And Mayor Sohei.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to eight E. This is a resolution that has to do with approving improvement plans for the Meadowland, Meadowlands Large Lot Three project and a final subdivision map and authorizing the city manager to execute a subdivision improvement agreement and to record final maps and improvement agreements. Let's get the question, I believe it was Mr. Garabedian.
Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Right, thanks again. So I have a number of concerns about this project. I would say the top of the list is the pressing of McBean next door to this, which reflects the hostility of the city to its industrial base, both for the sawmill actions affecting that and McBean. The, the county has a, I'm sorry, the city has a failure to manage neighborhood parks. Not, it doesn't involve the community in those decisions. It makes very, very incorrect decisions and is not planning that well. The stormwater system, no map, various stormwater issues, the vegetation management and tree management is a pretty severe, severely misdone in various ways. So the development, of course, is happening too fast, much too fast and without adequate planning and we're neglecting, neglecting other serious needs of the city, not to mention fire services. More, more building without adequate fire services just doesn't make any sense. So I'm opposed to this project because it is it is not what we should be doing at this time. The focus on, in fact, to call this routine defines the problem exactly, that something like this is considered routine without a full explanation while being on the main agenda now for a full report so the public can understand what's going on at this point and what's led up to it. So this is a difficult, difficult problem to have this now and for me, the public to be in a position to say, well, let's get this off consent and here are the various issues that need to be addressed. Just because some of you may understand this issue and know it since time immemorial that it was proposed, that doesn't mean the public knows it or knows what their role is. There's no explanation of what the public role is at this point. So the city is proceeding without a meaningful opportunity for public involvement and of course, the final serious problem is Gold Country Media does not, not cover issues like this. It does not cover development. It is a it is a monopoly, a media monopoly without competition. So it has no reason to really go into the depth that the public is required and is part of the reason that you need to do a better job, a more thorough job informing the public. And so that's why I'm asking that this be off and the various issues I raised be addressed. But I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment?
No, no other comments.
All right, I didn't hear a question in there, but if any of my colleagues would like to make any comments, go for it.
I heard two things. One was a reference to crowding Glatting McBean and the reality is, if I'm remembering correctly, this property was owned by Glatting McBean, offered up to a foundation for this very purpose. So Glatting McBean is actually a partner in all that is taking place here. The rest of the comments were very broad and were in opposition to development in general and we're just across the boards, nothing specific to this project that I heard.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Dan.
On the item is approving the improvement, approving the improvement plans. The project has always been, already been approved. It went through the full set of public hearings. Actually, when I was on the Planning Commission, which was nine years ago. All this says is they are doing their infrastructure according to the city rules. That's what we're agreeing to. They're using the right pipe, they're using the right depth and everything else. Simply so that they can get their final map so they can start issuing permits. It's not an approval of the project at all.
And just to break that down, because I did hear frustration of, oh, the from a public perspective, maybe there's no defined role, why can't I comment on this now? And part of that is, is that development is painstakingly slow and that opportunity existed for the residents that were here nine years ago. And that process has, I mean, that there's the public hearings, there were the the process where the public got to come in and raise concerns before somebody approved this happened. And we're not approving it because that part happened and now we're doing what Dan just said and it is literally just approving the map so permits can be pulled. So if I'm the public and I wasn't engaged nine years ago, I can understand feeling frustrated. However, that is the business of cities and that is just kind of how it goes and that's why we put all of our information online and why we continually say, hey, reach out to staff if you have questions so that we can walk you through what it is, so you can better understand it.
And I just tend to think of the comment about media. Everything is having to do with this, was published in the media because
Covered previously.
Probably eighty percent of the paper.
Yeah. So, but I do, I do
By the city. And noticed by the city, that doesn't necessarily mean that the media came out and did a story on it, which I think is what Mr.
I do understand though, if I'm a member of the public and I don't understand how long these things can take and I don't know what this means when it says you're approving some final thing, but like you didn't even give me an opportunity to discuss it, that feels frustrating and so maybe it's just trying to be better about when we, you know, have those questions explaining, here's what the process looks like and here's when this took place and this is when that engagement happened and this isn't what we're even voting on, so it wouldn't be an appropriate time for that engagement because the decision was made.
Well, it's like building a house.
Yeah.
It's the, the framework and the foundation and the design was the approval already. This is the finished work, right? That's already done, the project's done, we're just finishing it, so.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-209.
I'll second.
Can I get a real call? Yes.
Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritson?
Yes.
Councilmember Andriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent? And Mayor Sohei.
Yes. Great. I think that closes that out, correct? All right, moving along. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move forward to item 10, general business. Starting with 10A, adopt Resolution 2021-212, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment one of the Village One Property Taxation Agreement on behalf of the city with Placer County and Mr. Prosser will be giving our staff report. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Sohei and honorable members of City Council. The item before you is an amendment to the Village One Taxation Agreement that was originally approved by City Council in 2015. The original terms of the tax sharing agreement for the Village One area was a three-year term of a 50-50 tax split between the city and the county. And during that three years, the city and county were to negotiate, uh, in good faith to create a model and a, uh, a new model on how to, uh, address the cost for providing services from the city and the county to create a more equitable and realistic tax sharing agreement dependent on, uh, active development. Uh, as we're well aware, the Village One area had delayed in development, uh, the three years passed. And based on a triggering of the Village One tax sharing agreement, our tax sharing agreement with the county reverted to a 60% tax share to the county and a 40% to the city during a period of time of no development that really did not affect the city in, in any measurable manner. As we've begun construction and reassessing valuation of property in Village One, that reduction in sales tax, uh, property tax is become vitally important to, to the city's, uh, needs and, and funding opportunities. In 2020, the city began negotiations with county to address the, um, revisiting of the methodology and modeling for providing, uh, adequate, uh, property tax revenues to be shared between the county and the city. We evaluated the templates used from prior tax sharing agreements, uh, updated, uh, true costs and removed some items from, uh, both parties that were not appropriate for incorporating into revenue sharing. Uh, ultimately, the tax sharing agreement we have before us is a 55-45 split, 55% to the county, 45% to the city. It is the, uh, most, uh, favorable tax sharing agreement, uh, to date to the city. Uh, the, the other one that was most, the one that was most favorable prior to, uh, the approval of this document, if the council so desires, was the Lincoln Meadows Tax Sharing Agreement, but that was 56 and a half percent to the county and 44% to, and a half to the city. Uh, the, uh, tax sharing agreement has been reviewed, uh, by, uh, staff, legal and, uh, both sides, and the county is prepared to approve it at their next regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, this, uh, agreement again allows for, uh, it'll, uh, in, in summary, it allows for the county to recoup the cost for their providing of services in the area to be, that was annexed in Village One with no surplus dollars. And that allows the remainder of the property tax revenue would go to the city. That does, uh, create a deficit, uh, per unit residential deficit that traditional residential's do occur when developing. Uh, although it has reduced that overall deficit per unit from the 60-40 split to the 55-45, reduction of approximately $80 a year for, uh, Public Services CFD. So the, uh, the net deficit that is created by this updated tax sharing agreement would be implemented to make sure the city is whole and providing, uh, the funding for public services for this area by the continuation of annexing new development into CFD 2018 dash two, which is our Public Services CFD. And, uh, to date, uh, those areas in Village One that have been annexed into the Public Services CFD were actually annexed at a higher max tax because they were under the previous 60-40 split. Uh, so there was a concern that we wouldn't receive as much sales tax, uh, but property tax revenue as we currently are being proposed to receive. And staff's recommendation is, uh, council approval of the tax sharing agreement amendment one. Uh, and, uh, and that approval forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to my colleagues first for questions and then we'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any questions?
Holly, you look like you want to. I just have a comment. Um, this is super frustrating because the city would be whole if it was 50-50 instead of, you know, the, what it is now. And we wouldn't have to have the CFD. So not gonna, you know, argue that we need to go back and whatever because it's too late for that. But, um, this is really infuriating. And I guess, I guess we should be grateful, um, for this. But I think it's, I think it's insulting and, and this type of deal, um, we shouldn't be doing these anymore. It should be equitable. It should be 50-50 because, um, we provide more services for these people. We're going to be left taking care of public safety for this development for now until forever. And I just, I just want to make it, I just want to make it known and just put it on the record that, um, I think this is just unacceptable. I mean, I appreciate all the work of staff. I'm not blaming staff or anything. I just think that the attitudes need to change. And it, and it should be 50-50 and we wouldn't have to do CFDs and charge people more taxes. And we could take care of what we need to take care of and our city would be a lot more whole. And that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, I did ask for questions, but I, I like your comment. Did you have a question?
Questions only.
I mean, comments welcomed.
So I think the, the, the first thing I would say just for, for, uh, the public's benefit is what we're talking about here is how to divide up the 1% of property tax revenue that is shared by, by the county and the city. So, so whenever folks ask, where's all our tax dollars going? It's not going here. This is 1%, um, but not a full 1%. My, my, that's what we're fighting over is the 1%. Um, my concern is we've talked about this becoming the template moving forward. Correct? And even in, in your presentation.
Uh, the, the estimated values for individual land uses is what was the collaboration with the county and the city. Uh, the, uh, the breakdown of, of the revenue sharing is not, it's not a template. Those would be negotiated individually. It was basically coming up with the modeling assumptions that both of our fiscal consultants could use to best, better advise city and county for moving forward.
That's what I needed to hear. In the past, we talked about 50-50 being the model moving forward and just uniform for all future projects. So, and, and I think my colleague is correct. We need to, to in the future, get, uh, as close to that as possible. So, so Stephen, in, in the past, we have asked for a true breakdown of the county's cost. Did they provide that this?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Uh, it, well, they provided a variety, uh, through negotiations and cooperation. We've had a variety of versions of that that have been, streamlined and tightened as the county's re, uh, use of resources in the, in, in those areas have been reevaluated and, and some costs have been reduced per unit, which got a more realistic number and stopped what I was, what I was calling is the surplus to the county. That the, the, the adding of surplus funding to some of the accounts so that it's true costs, not true cost plus of reserve. That was our focus. That was a prior city manager's focus, a current interim city manager's focus. My focus was that the, this is not a money-making opportunity for the county. It was an opportunity to make the county whole to a zero balance at buildout. So they spend, their, their allocated property taxes is what's going to be spent to serve administratively the, that area, but not we punish any, uh, county funds.
Do we have any check-ins along the way to make certain that that remains true?
We, there are, uh, there is opportunities in, there is a check-in in the tax sharing agreement. If there's some material, uh, change in the assumptions, uh, but we have utilized very conservative assumptions. The, the actual revenue that should be generated from Village One for both the, for the city should be higher than we've, we have conservatively estimated. Uh, so, but there is, there are, if something is markedly wrong, we have an opportunity to reach, review it.
And, and maybe again, for the public's, uh, benefit, you could go over the services the county does provide, uh, to the citizens of Lincoln.
So it's the, it's the court system, jail system and health and human services. Uh, we provide our own library district. We have our own police and fire services. And our, and provide all other utility services for the area. So it's predominantly the, uh, the court system and the jail, and the jail system. And then the sheriff's administration of those two sub. Invasion. And then, yes, and then health and human services.
So while our officers may make an arrest, it then shifts to the jails, it then shifts to the court systems, all of which is paid for with that other.
And that was another, well, there was another contentious period, uh, discussion because, and as the chief knows, you know, we do pay booking fees. And so how would you calculate that in? In, in, in addressing that as, as an equitable part of that funding, because they do receive funds every time we bring someone to their facility. But there still is the admin. So those were the nuances that were in the negotiations.
I think that's all I have.
And I do want to make sure that as we've seen, as council has approved in previous, uh, tech, uh, uh, CFD annexations for 2018 dash two, even if the city receives the full property tax revenue in the areas, some of our infill areas where we have very favorable tax sharing to no tax sharing, really, really no tax sharing agreements with county, the construction of a residential property will always cause a deficit in providing services based solely on property tax revenue. It's just that level of deficiency.
And thus the vehicle of the CFDs to make up that delta. All right.
Okay. So we're at comment time. Right. First of all, that really the template part of this is embodied in the ability in the future, when the system, when it's built out or close to build out, to find out what the real costs are for both the city and the county. I don't, I almost was going to suggest that we have a workshop sometime, have Jamie come in and explain how you do this negotiations and modeling and everything else. What you are doing is putting together an extremely significant financial model for 40 years. You're guessing, they're guessing, we're guessing, and you both guessed the way you want to, what it's going to be. And that perform, that provides the parameters for the model. And, and why this is the first of the new templates is significant is because the template that they had from day one, the tax sharing agreements that we finally got some work done on. But they had no ability to change period ever at all, which was a hard lift getting them to agree that a temporary change. The, the city smartened up a little bit and the Village One and Village Seven, Village Seven being the first one, they said, aha, let's put a, essentially a rerun of the financial model when we have a better handle on the, on the, uh, on the development. The, the, uh, the rate of development and everything else. Well, the error in that, uh, tax sharing agreement, which we're going to have to look at in Village Seven, just as we have redone on Village One, is that was a time certain of three years. Well, from the time that we signed the tax sharing agreement, fast forward to three years, there wasn't even a tractor out there moving dirt. So you can't forecast, can't forecast downturns in the economy over 40 years. You can't forecast pandemics. The model is only as good as the information you have. It's time that you make the model. The tax sharing agreement has in it either party, either the city or the county in the future has enough data to show that the model is skewed one way or the other. You put in actuals, rerun the model and then see what your tax sharing amount is. Is it, is it still 55-45 or is it 57, 30, 43, whatever the, anyway. That, that's what you should be excited about is that ability to true up more than once in the 40 or 50 life, your life cycle of the development agreements. Because you got actual data, not guesses. And, and, and there's nothing wrong. You have to forecast the future. There's always a guess. It's just how good you are at guessing. But, you know, it's hard to guess and forecast four years from now, let alone 30. So I'm excited about it. I mean, I believe that this is an equitable sharing based on what we know. We, they know what their costs are. We know what we think our costs are going to be. You know, because you renegotiate public safety every couple of years. You renegotiate, uh, employee labor. And you don't know what that's going to be. And that has a major effect on the cost for supporting, uh, residents. So but I think maybe a workshop in depth for the City Council as well as the, uh, the public and seeing what that spreadsheet looks like, what all it's contained and, uh, how things can vary would be worthwhile. So.
I, I think for some people in the public and maybe even at this dius are going to see an inequity is the fact that we have to create a CFD to make up the difference. So the county is made whole. We have to charge additional fees to the homeowner ultimately to make them whole or to make us whole for providing those services.
Or, or develop commercial. We always, from the day that, almost that you were born, you knew.
It's a long time ago.
Well, yeah. And given what your dad did, you knew residential is a loser. Right?
Yeah, but it, it might be that, but it doesn't have to be that much more difficult to make it up, right? Like, I think that it's in this day that we're in, as far as we have come, I think that it's time for the city and the county to have, um, an agreement that, that they need to be willing to make us as whole as possible instead of us always paddling, paddling, paddling to try to keep up and to provide services that we need. I totally get what you're saying, Dan, and I, I really appreciate your insight and your knowledge. I really do. I learn a lot from you. But, but Paul is right. Like, we have to add more taxes onto our people just to get partway there, just to get partway there. And another thing that people would say, and I'm not saying this, right? So don't take it the wrong way. But if residential is always a loser and we're always behind and a lot of people are worried about all this building, then why do we keep doing it? Now I realize the state puts mandates on us, but it's like, if we're always behind, if it's always an issue, why don't we just stop and figure out a better way? I mean, I just, I'm tired of always feeling behind.
Will be able to afford to live anywhere.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Hold on. You've talked, you've talked, you've talked. Bill, would you like to say anything?
Yes.
There you go.
Mr. Plosser for the, uh, negotiating this agreement. It, it, like, like everyone says, we're not really sure, you know, what, how things are going to be in the next 10, 20 years. So I, I'm sure that you've negotiated the best deal that you can. And, uh, I think tonight we should just go along with it. I mean, in the future, yes, we're going to have to look at things a little bit differently.
I will say something and you can continue. And I'll keep it brief, but I would have to say I agree with both. I am excited about the opportunity that this is so much better than anything we've had before. Um, but I also am going to have to lean this way and say that what we had before was such a low bar that it's insulting. Um, and that I don't know that this particular breakdown should be our goal. Um, I will also agree with Bill that I will go along with it tonight because I think that it is an improvement. Um, and I think that it probably at the end of the day is in our best interest, um, for right now. But I would also really like to see that workshop and I would like to see that spreadsheet and I would like to have those discussions. Now, go ahead. But I would also really like to see that workshop and I would like to see that spreadsheet and I would like to have those discussions. Now go ahead.
First of all, I, I let you get away with saying that residential is a loser. It, it is in no way is a loser by any means, but, but the phrase we all know, rooftops come before commercial. You have to have that population base before any commercial businesses are going to be interested in your community and thus bring those sales tax generating businesses to your town. There's just, it takes time to build that up. We got hit by a couple of recessions that slowed Lincoln down significantly. And to be honest, we're at the kind of the end of the highway sixty-five corridor. We're not on eighty. So, so it's a little more difficult here.
One thing would be worthwhile researching is I don't think, at least in the people I've talked to locally, I don't think anybody has a tax sharing agreement that allows a re, relook periodically.
None that I'm aware of.
I think, you know, and I think that that we may be setting the bar for a lot of other cities, which is not.
There's a lot of good in here. And Steve, I don't want you or your staff to, to think that in any way, we don't appreciate all that we've done. We absolutely do, do. And we recognize what's there and, and I'm going to support it tonight, although I'd still like to see some better agreements in the future. Here's the challenge. The county doesn't have to agree to anything. The county can just say, yeah, no, and you're done. So.
Especially, and I want to just go, you know, add on to council member Joyner's comments. The tax sharing agreement in village one is sixty, forty to the county. Not approving this, not approving this document, the, the tax sharing agreement moving forward is sixty, forty to the county. This is not a negotiation of a new tax sharing agreement. This is a, this is a true up of one that we built in a trigger that either we as a city take advantage of or lose six percent of the property tax that we deserve.
And I appreciate that, Steve. I do.
And let me flip this on its ear a little bit because Bigford Ranch is a project that is developing entirely in the county. And there's another going to our, our south as well. Those very large project, projects will have serious impacts on our community and will receive no funds.
Which do we, I mean, that's a separate item, but that is something, right? Where it's on our border, it's on our, it's our impact.
Entirely within there.
So that's probably why we all.
And we could argue that a tax sharing agreement is good for the goose and good for the gander. You're going to have impacts on us. We ought to have a, a conversation about that. But at this point in time, we just get the impacts without the revenues to address them.
I think what we're hearing is frustration over some systemic issues over a long term. And we've maybe gotten a little off of
It is in my mind better to develop within the municipalities with these tax sharing agreements. So we can begin to address these issues as opposed to having the county keep all of the revenues, still have the impacts fall upon us and have no control of it.
So let's go out to the public because we have yet to do that. And then we'll bring it back up. Do we have any comment?
Yes, we do have one in the chambers. Mr. Chapman, please come forward.
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilmembers Byron Chapman. We, we may already have this information, but the other cities that are within the county, do we know what agreements they have that are in place? And if they're certainly higher than what, what's it already been, or at least to the forefront of agreeing to tonight? If, if there's a much higher, one, how did that get there? And two, at, at what point can we move in that direction and, and use that as the template? And again, I don't know the answer to the first question, but if they're certainly different from ours and in a more larger figure percentage wise that we're talking about here for Lincoln, if that is larger for other cities within Placer County, that in itself is an inequity that I, I would think. I, I think Councilman Joyner had pointed it out, what, what leverage do we honestly have in order to allow the county to do whatever they say they want to do? I, I know there's parameters involved, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And if, if Lincoln in any way is lesser of what other agreements have already been made, I can't see an argument in which the county needs to at least equalize that if it's greater than what we're even talking about today. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have another comment on Zoom. Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Hi, Mike Garabedian. Well, first I have to comment that Mr. Joyner and I may actually agree on something here. And, and that is that municipal services should be in cities and not in unincorporated territory. I'm not sure if he would agree with me that we should abolish the local agency formation commissions. My, my point here, I'll make the same point as last time, that, that this has been presented to the public without any map or pictures to show what the project is, where the annexations are, the relationship of the, the different villages. It's all in Mr. Prosser's mind, which is, I guess, a good place to have it stored and good to have the questions about it. But it seems to me to not allow the public to see what's being talked about is it's, it seems like laziness to me to not give us a, a word about what's, what's going on and where it is. So that, and that's the same point I was making last time, that here was a, a major project, not even shown. So people can get a concept of what it is visually. And, and in this case, to understand the relationship of what's, what's being proposed out there to the fiscal issues. Thanks.
Thank you. It is in the staff report. Do you have the page number by chance? The very last page, if you wanted to flip back to it, there is a visual. Do we have any other comment?
No, Mayor, no other comment.
All right, I'll bring it back up here. I for one think that having a workshop to be able to discuss some of this would be great. Does anyone else like Dan's idea? Because I do.
Yeah, no, I think that would be beneficial.
I agree with that, yes.
I wasn't thinking that the workshop would discuss the dysfunction of county and city government. I was.
But you knew it would go that way. It would, it is going to explain how this works and how we solve the dysfunction. I mean, it would be a positive thing.
Yes, I, I would hope it's a positive.
It would need to be a positive thing or.
Because there is a lot of staff, a lot of detail. Lot that goes behind this forty-five, you know? It depends on the specific land use. Is it an adult community? Is it a, you know? So, and those vary the rates.
Which would be informative moving forward though, because not every, every development agreement is going to be different, is going to have different nuance and different characteristics. So that we can understand where that leverage ought to be and why we're not.
Well, correct. Well, right. And that, that makes me think of a question that maybe either any one of you guys can address or Steve can address. So in this particular development, village one, right? So I'm very curious. So Steve said that the county cost is, you know, the, the jail, the, the court, that kind of thing. How does that get assessed for a development like Esplanade? It's going to be fifty-five and older. I don't foresee a whole lot of arrests there. And so I'm wondering, how does that get calculated, right? Like, I realize, you know, we make arrests around town and we send them to the jail and we pay for that. Village one is way different. How does that get translated? I'm very, I'm very curious.
I think that's what this workshop would address because it's.
Yeah, but I, yes, no, I understand that. But I, I'm just curious for, maybe Steve can give me a really quick answer because I was specific to this. Because I was, I was thinking that earlier, specifically when he said, when you said the county costs and he said jails and all of that and the court system. So my question is, specific to village one, how does that get allocated when I don't foresee a whole lot of arrests happening in Esplanade or Turkey Creek.
It's, the county's costs are per capita. Our costs were related to direct level of service for increased public safety due to the age of the residents. The, yeah, they, they were factoring, factoring in valuation of the homes and the less than standard population per residential unit for that service providing provision in the, for the county services. But we did add an escalation factor onto our services because of the increased needs of Chief Al's team for. And so that, that was fact, those were both factored in.
Okay.
But on the county side, that it, it is regardless of age, it's a per capita calculation.
Yeah, and that, but what takes into consideration that is the, is.
Population of the household.
Population of the household.
Yeah.
You, you might be able to argue that while there may be fewer arrests and jailing, there would likely be more use of health and human services for an aging population.
Without funding sources already determined.
I know, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm, I'm working on.
Is worthy of discussion.
So with respect to a workshop.
Yeah, that's exactly the sort of.
I'm fine with it. I don't know that it is a high priority. So if it happens next summer or somewhere down the line.
Informative. I think it'd be interesting. And I think that it would probably be useful as we move forward to try to negotiate these in the future. It would be something that would be.
Mr. Scott.
No, I don't think that Mark will still be here. And, but put it on the list somewhere.
Yep, all right.
We, we got one. I know that's pretty long.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
As I'm saying, are we good? Go for it.
A motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash two, one, two, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number one of the village one property tax sharing agreement on behalf of the city with Placer County.
Have a second. Can I get a roll call?
Thank you. Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawretson. Councilmember Andriana.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right. Thank you for that. And we'll move on to ten B. This is resolution twenty twenty-one dash two, one, three. Approving new positions of finance manager and chief innovation and technology officer. And Mr. Scott will be giving the staff report.
Thank you. I'm happy to be making this report. As you all know, our organization is growing. The staff part of the organization hasn't grown as fast as the, the community has grown, but we are, we are continuing to grow. We continue to have a more complex organization, more complex task to meet the city's needs. We have the confluence of that factor and the labor market that is making it extremely difficult to hire and to retain good talent. And so looking at the world through that lens, I look at our own organization and I've identified two places where we have an opportunity to upgrade the roles of two of our staff people in such a way that it helps meet future city needs and gives us an opportunity to reward and challenge even more deeply the services of a couple of our employees. So this item recommends that the city council adopt the resolution, and I think the mayor just read this, approving two new positions, one being the finance manager position and the other chief innovation and technology officer. Start with the finance manager very briefly. This is a pretty typical position title in the municipal finance business. A finance manager in most cities our size would be someone who would be a number two in the department, would be somebody who would fill in in the absence of the director. We, of course, right now have no director. And except for me, and that's a excuse for a director. And the, the finance manager position in, as proposed here would include the functions of accounting, accounts payable, payroll and other functions, the utility billing, other functions that we, we're performing here. It's not, the appointment to the position is not a, a matter that's before the city council. But I also want to say clearly that it would be my intention to appoint Sandra Cook to that position. Sandra has been a high achiever in the organization for some time and is certainly ready for this, this advancement. And I'm, I'm proud to be able to do something about that. The position itself would have a salary at, at eleven thousand, one hundred and seven dollars a month. It would be a contract contracted position that I would be bringing, I would bring back to the council the job description. And I think we may require bringing back the establishment of the range, the salary range that that falls within. So there's a couple of things that the next meeting we'll bring back to have the city council approve beyond what we're asking you for tonight. Her position today is called accounting manager. That position is not, we're not talking about refilling that right now, although when we start adopting the enterprise resources planning software tool, the ERP, as it's known in the, in the business, we are going to need additional accounting staff. And, and so that will be something we will bring back separately to the city council for funding. That's the finance manager position. The chief innovation and technology officer position, that's not a title you see every day in municipal government. However, we have a IT manager in our organization that you also don't see every day in local government. She's an extraordinarily talented performer. She's probably listening as we're speaking here. She'll make sure that I don't get cut out while I'm talking. Jennifer Brown has been working in that capacity for some time. Jennifer's got the ability to I say she sees around corners. She's, she's got a creative mind that allows her to see opportunities and jump at them. And she's done that repeatedly in her current position. And, and her position right now is not a department head level position, but it deserves to be. So with this recommendation, and I'm asking the council to approve this new position that really I chose the title to indicate that I'm looking for her to look beyond the technology role, internal and external, in other words. And, and really work with departments across the whole spectrum of our city organization. The position that I'm recommending would be at a salary of fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. Again, I need to bring back the job description and I believe probably the salary range for formal council adoption. I would try to do that at your next meeting. Those are my recommendations for two deserving people. We've got a lot of deserving people in this organization. By exclusion, it doesn't leave out anybody else that we may need to take a look at, but these two positions certainly do merit this this recommendation. And I would ask you to approve it.
Thank you. I'll open it up to my colleagues if anyone has questions. Let's do questions first, then let's do public comment, and then let's do comments. Does that work for everyone? Just so we, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Any questions? All right, let's open it for public comment and then we can make our comments.
Mayor, I don't have any hands on Zoom and I don't see any hands in the chambers.
All right, great. I'll close public comment now. Comments, we can start with Holly.
Okay. So, yeah, I have no questions. I am a hundred percent in support of this. We've been talking a long time and the public is sick of hearing us say that our staff is thin and recruiting is hard and we can't do this and we can't do that because of our staff. And part of the way that we address that is to keep the valuable people that we already have. And if we don't take these steps to make them feel valued in, in title and in pay and all of that, then they will leave and go other places. And then we're going to be even more behind the eight ball. So I'm hoping that, you know, when people are listening and they say, oh, my gosh, that's this money, that money, take it into the scope of the whole picture, right? We're trying to get past the point of saying, we can't do this, we can't do that because our staff, because we're trying to build our staff. Take it into the scope of the whole picture, right? We're trying to get past the point of saying, we can't do this, we can't do that because our staff, because we're trying to build our staff. And value our staff and, and bring them up to a level that's comparable with the region and not even at the highest level. So I'm, I'm very grateful for the work that you have done on this, very grateful for these two individuals in particular, love all the staff, but we're talking about these two ladies right now. They've done phenomenal work. They've hung in there. They've worked many, many hours, and, um, I'm, I'm proud to support this tonight to, um, to show our appreciation to them. And the good work that they're going to do moving forward.
Thank you.
You know. Jen Brown got rid of the echo. That alone is worth a bump.
Genius.
I, I think what I will say is, um, it is a pleasure to be in a position after so many years of having to make reductions or hold the line. To be able to begin to reward the folks that stuck with us. And, and. Retain the talent we have. This is an extremely competitive marketplace. I guarantee virtually every position in this city is being, um, approached by other cities. Hoping to, I'll just use the word poach, uh, the talent that we have here. And so think about what that does for us if, if we lose somebody who is integral to a department, uh, both in their knowledge and experience. But, but just their familiarity with the organization itself. We're down that position. We have to go out for a recruitment. That costs money and time. Then we bring a new person in who hopefully has the. General knowledge, wisdom and experience of that individual, but they don't yet know our community or our organization. And it's a good year before they're up to speed again. So what is the cost of that as opposed to doing the best we can? To reward and retain the talent we have, and that's what this is all about. And I thank Mark for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Dan.
Agree with what both Paul and Holly have said. I believe. Both of these employees. Are going to be stretched by these jobs. Both of these employees have shown that they thrive on being stretched. So we're not only retaining, we're gaining. Because they are, it's. Well, I don't know about innovation and technology officer, what that job entails other than for keeping everybody.
Things, Dan, innovative things.
I do know what finance manager does entail, and that's a natural tension of, uh. Her, uh, her role plus. It grows, it grooms her for the next, which is the next step. So I don't know. They love, they love working here. They want to stay here, but you have to keep these type of employees. Challenged. I don't mean with a whip. I mean intellectually.
Cause that's exactly where her mind went. What is wrong with you?
You have to keep them challenged with.
Projects.
Yeah.
Opportunity. Yeah. A reason to come to work and want to be here. Are you, oh, I said, go ahead before I knew you're done. Are you done? Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Anyway, yeah, I have to agree with everyone on this one. Uh, we have to, uh, reward these people that, I mean, this, these are the jobs that they're actually performing. We're in a very, very competitive job market. We all know that. And we really, we really need to retain people. Um, so I'm all for this.
All right. Let me tell you what I appreciate about this, and I'm going to compliment Mark, who does such a good job of complimenting his staff. What I appreciate about this is I agree what you, to what you said with a caveat. I think that so often government, local government, state government, federal government, it's so bureaucratic. It's so stepped, processed, and once you're in. You're in, and we're talking retention. I actually don't think that there's any value in retaining employees that aren't, um, putting out. Outputs that help us. Um, and what I like about this particular proposal is that we have just applied private sector thinking. To the public sector. It is recognizing that we have exceptional employees who have talents, as Dan said, who are going to be able to feed forward our organization. But also, one of the things that the private sector does right is it, it, it invests in its people with professional development opportunities, with next step opportunities, with wanting to help them build what their future looks like. And that's what this is going to be able to do, I think, for both of these individuals. So it's not only like, hey, we want to retain you because you give value to us, but recognizing. You give a lot of value to us, and we want to give value to you back and want to make you feel valued. And I think that's something that local government or just government internal gets wrong sometimes. And I think that, um. By acknowledging that these two individuals really have, they came more than carried their weight, but also just have exceptional talents and are, are people that we really value. It's an opportunity for us to say that up here. And I think is a innovative, innovative thing to bring forward because not everyone will want to change the way that our structure is and change titles to acknowledge the individual themselves. And so I appreciate that you did that, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to say yes, um, and to be able to let these individuals know how much we do appreciate them in our organization. So those would be my thoughts. Do we have?
I'll move.
Here we go.
If we adopt resolution twenty twenty one to thirteen, approving the new positions of finance manager and chief innovation and technology manager.
My second.
Get a real call.
Thank you. Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner. Councilmember Lawretson.
Yes.
And Mayor Sohi.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Okay, we will continue on. This is items ten C, adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash two hundred and fourteen. Um, it's a resolution approving a three percent cost of living increase for the classifications of city clerk, library director, public safety chief, city attorney, and human resources direction, director. And adoption of related revised salary schedules. Mr. Scott will also be giving this.
Yes. So I'm going to take those compliments that I just got on the last item, and I'm bringing forward something that is doing the minimal for, um. The other. Department level staff, the contracted staff. That simply raises their salary ranges by the three, same three percent that we did with all of the other non-public safety bargaining units. It doesn't in any way suggest that's the only thing that we ought to do to look after and, and reward these very deserving employees. It just simply is a step that we need to take to provide comparability equity with, with the other positions in the city. The positions, and I, I'm going to go through a little bit of detail that I know the council doesn't need, but the. Brown Act requires now that we talk very specifically about what we do with compensation for any contracted employee. So the positions of city clerk, library director, public safety chief, um, city attorney and human resources director. Are those positions that have not yet had that three percent increase. The staff report lists the actual impact that has on the city budget, which is negligible. The general funds affected by eighty six hundred and eighty two dollars. The whole, the whole increase across all of the funds that it gets allocated to is sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty seven dollars for this fiscal year. Of course, it gets. It's full year after, uh, in, in next year's budget. Do I need to list the salary, the specific salaries for each position by this new Brown Act rule or?
I don't believe so. It's attached.
Yeah, it is. It is attached.
And it is attached to the resolution.
Yeah, I could, uh, I mean, I point out that the, the actual salary levels. For each step, I don't know who's on what step right now, but the, the top levels for each of those positions are listed in the staff report and easily available to the public. So with that, that's, I'm asking the council for the minimum action on these very deserving employees.
And, and sometimes that's the best we can do, but we appreciate you all very much. Do any of my colleagues have questions? Questions, questions. Let's go out to public comment.
Uh, Mayor, I don't have any hands. I'm sorry. I do have a hand raised too. Um, so we'll go with Mr. Schreiber first. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Albert Schreiber. Um, my question is in regards to the, uh, fiscal impact. Uh, they got a chart there. At an airport fund seven fifty. Maybe you have more than one airport fund. I don't know. It seems like, wasn't too long ago you approved a sixty year loan to fund the airport. And the staff report at that time said you may not be able to repay that. And now it looks like you're taking money out of the airport fund for, for this. So, um, am I missing something? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any? Do we have other?
Uh, yes.
And we'll address it in a minute. Please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I realize that, uh, particularly since the pandemic, uh, there have certainly been supply lines that have been interrupted. Prices are going through the roof. Whether it's fuel, food, doesn't matter. All of us are paying more at each of those. I, I may be going down a, a hole that we've all been down before over the years, but. We, we do indeed need to at least recognize how this really pans out. For example. I'm all in agreement that if you're paying more money due to inflation and that's eating into the amount of money that you're getting. That, that's one thing together, and, and that affects all of us. The only way it's different is whether you buy more gas or less gas, but you're going to pay the same price for the gas and groceries, utilities, you name it. Granted, there's a structure in place in order to give people raises for their performance. What I didn't see in the packet, uh, I, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say what exactly each one of those positions where they are at the spa, they scale. It simply shows all the way through, and there are seven steps of increases in each of those jobs. What I did was, uh, I sharpened the old pencil, and I simply tried to get to the, it's close to the middle of the road. So I went through step five. Uh, and I took out, uh, three classifications, uh, one being a city clerk, for example. If you take three, a three percent cost of living raise for the city clerk, uh, that's an increase of three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. However, if you take a higher paid employee. Uh, I looked here at the city manager's position and also the city attorney's position, uh, that, that number is close to double. Six thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars. Uh, my concern is. The person on the higher end of the scale, when you come across with a three percent cost of living, that person on the lower scale really is not getting near as much money in order to offset that cost. Then the person's on the higher scale. I realize that that's how things have been done in the past. I don't know exactly how to go about making that equitable, other than if people were like, yeah, there's a cost of living for whatever. And that cost of living is three thousand dollars a year or two thousand dollars a year, and everyone receives that, and then that balances the board out. Unfortunately, what happens here in many cases is the people on the lower portion of the scale do indeed get. A lower portion of the cost of increase in living. So I think that needs to be looked at and addressed because it's certainly not equitable and fair.
Thank you. Do we have any others from Skellman? All right, we'll bring it back up. Um, do we want to address the, uh, pulling out of the airport? It's like two hundred dollars. And because it's a position that touches on every single department of the city, correct? Is that? All right. Um, questions, Holly? I mean, comments? Do you have any?
Well, I would make the same comments, um, that I did the last time. Um, with these positions. There's been a real heavy burden laid on all of these positions throughout the last, you know, year and a half, two years through the pandemic. Through having thin staff to begin with, um, and all of the demands that have, you know, been happening, um, in general business, but then with all of the, the pandemic, uh, issues as well. And so, um, I appreciate every single one of you and the work that you do and, um, and not, not specifically as in valued more, but. But to just thank Gwen for the work that she does. Um, I don't know what we're going to do when you retire. You are, you are, yeah, we're not talking about that. You are the, the most, the most efficient city clerk ever, and, um. If anybody does try to poach you, I will hurt them. So, yeah, we really, really appreciate you. That's right. And I'm not afraid to say it in an open meeting.
And the chief of police has written that down.
Yes, yes. That's, that's all right. That's all right. But in, in respects to, um, our library director, she's amazing. She does a great job. She has done phenomenal, uh, work with. The opening of the high school and the joint use of the library. We, we have a gem in her. She's amazing. Um, with Chief Al's, you know, uh. It was really a pleasure watching you be promoted and the fact that you were willing to step into handling both police and fire. And you didn't squawk about it. You just said, we can do it, right? And, and, uh, you're doing a phenomenal job and really appreciate, um, your presence and the fact that you're around and. Just have really, uh, really great confidence in, in what you're doing and how you're, you know, taking care of our, our city. Um, and then, um.
More confidence than a three percent COLA.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Put that in.
And then for Christine, our city attorney, um. Uh, you know, I, I can't even put into words how grateful we are for the work that you do. You tackle a lot of hard things. You deal with a lot of hard issues, a lot of, you know, different litigations and walking us through some very, you know, complex things. And the fact that, um, you have stayed with and, you know, built, built your, your, I, I want to say build your team, you and Anthony, right, with code enforcement. So using the word team is a little bit funny, but, um, you know, your supervision of him, you know, he's doing a great job and, uh, you know. Uh, cleaning up the city and, you know, taking care of folks' needs. And so just really, really grateful for you and the work that you do. And then for Veronica and our human resources and her team, I mean, seriously, this woman is able to drill down on stuff and negotiate and, you know, get, get the best thing for both sides, right? Really appreciate all the work she does. So I know I'm being long-winded, but I really think it's important to, to, uh, to, again, to show value, especially since what everyone's been through. It's been, it's been a hard two years. It's been a hard two years. And, and for those who, who hung in there and who have just kept plugging along and doing great, great work for the city. Cause it's, it's not always easy. Sometimes people are mad at us. Sometimes things happen and it's, it's challenging and, uh, I believe in giving honor where honor is due. And so to all of you, thank you so much. Really appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. I know my colleagues feel the same way, and I know the residents do too. So thank you.
So I will just say that your long windedness allowed the rest of us not to have to be that. You covered that exceptionally well. With respect to Gwen, Gwen, I believe inherited, for those, uh, in the public who do not know, there was a, a jar. Traveling around city offices with marbles in them, and that staff member who was going to retire would put in as many marbles as they had days left and then remove a marble.
Didn't Pam start that?
We have hidden the jar.
Yes.
From Gwen.
Exactly, exactly.
The other thing I would add, well, two things. One is that I didn't see Matt scratch out his note about you hurting someone as you complimented him, so I, I would watch out for that. And, and the other thing I, I think needs to be said is that Christine, um, of her own volition, and thank God for it. Has been more than a city attorney. She has actually been acting frankly in the capacity of an assistant city manager very often. Without additional compensation, but with all the additional, um, headaches, worries, concerns, uh, and additional time. So we, we deeply appreciate that, and I think the public should know that. Other than that, you've covered it great.
Well, I'll just, I'll just make one comment about my long wind. Well, I'll just, I'll just make one comment about my long-windedness. You guys need to remember that I am a teacher and a pastor and it just comes with the, with the territory.
You have nothing to say.
You're overwhelmed.
Are you feeling all right, Dan? Bill, did you have anything?
Yeah, I totally agree with what's been said. I mean, the people involved, Gwen, Christine, Catherine, Matt, and everybody, you know, has done a fantastic job, you know? And again, I want to reiterate that we, you know, we have to retain good people. And, you know, one of the ways to do that is to reward them. So, yeah, I totally agree with this. And again, I don't think Holly was talking about physically hurting anyone, but I mean.
You never know.
She, he gave you an out, Holly. For me, I'll just say, you know, my comments in the last one where I was excited that we were able to do something different and innovative and flexible to really tailor an opportunity that didn't exist previously for individuals that have stepping stones that they want to take. This is, you're already in positions that are the position. There isn't another position to create for you, aside from assistant city manager that we have leaned on you for. So thank you. But it really is the least we can do. It's not a matter of like trying to incentivize you for retention, but just saying, I'm sorry that it took a while and I'm glad to be able to vote on it. And thank you for sticking with us and for being such integral roles in the city and honestly holding us together. And it doesn't go unnoticed that you literally are holding it all together all the time. And you guys do an exceptional job doing it. And I echo every single thing that my colleagues said on it and we really appreciate you. And I wish that we could show we appreciated you with more than a 3% COLA. But I'm glad that we can at least give you that. Did you have comments?
Well, I just want to make sure that I'm not being disingenuous that, as I said, the 3% COLA is just simply the equity with what the COLA element of those other.
Yeah, it's parity.
Negotiated. I do have some ideas on, on more creative ways to incentivize retention. And, and I'm planning on addressing some of those while I'm still here. So I just wanted, want to put it on the record. I'll bring that forward when I get to it.
And I didn't, I didn't want to mention it, but I know that we've had some of those talks and that I am very much looking forward to seeing those proposals brought forward. And I echo my comments before, I really appreciate your innovation towards how we can do that for our employees. Because I don't think we say it enough, how much we appreciate you. And you know that we have limited resources, but we really are trying to do what we can across the spectrum. To do what we can to recognize that. Do I have? Are we good? Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution 2021 to 14.
Second.
You, Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent and Mayor Sohei.
Yes. Yeah, always. We sound so inconvenienced by your vote, Dan. I know. I love it. All right, we'll move along to item 10D. And this is just going to be a council discussion regarding if we would like to make necessary findings under AB 361 to continue any ability for appointed boards and commissions of the city to have flexibility for public participation. Let's go to the city attorney for the staff report.
So I will not belabor the staff report because we did have a very long discussion about this at a very recent meeting and the council's decision not to proceed with making findings under AB 391, which then requires us to come back in person. And if one of you wished to attend remotely, we would go back to all of the special noticing requirements under the Brown Act involving posting at the location of your meeting, making public comment available at the location of that meeting. The way the statute's written, it does allow for the council to make special findings for different subsections of its, of its body. So we had several members of some of the commissions, most significantly the independent redistricting commission, which has 11 members, but other members as well of other boards and commissions who, for various reasons, still have concerns about coming back in person. Some of the issues we have as staff with accommodating, especially a large group like 11 members, is the social distancing requirements and the physical limitations we have here in our chambers. And so I am bringing this back to you for further discussion to see if there's an interest in making findings that would allow some or all of these commissions or boards to participate in virtual hybrid meetings and still allow their participation virtually to count toward quorum and allow them to vote and not have to have the heightened hosting and noticing restrictions. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer, but I think we're all fairly comfortable with the subject matter because it has been discussed very recently.
Let's do questions, comment, I mean, questions, public comment, and then our comments. It's working.
So, so my question is, how do we make findings for them that doesn't apply to us? Right? Cause, cause I'm not willing to declare emergency where we go back to Zoom. So how does that apply to them and not to us?
So the findings in your resolution would just need to be very specific that because of their, you know, the mask mandate or the mask recommendations and because of the physical limitations of the chamber facility where these individuals will be required to sit in very close proximity, that those provide enough consideration for the council to make specific findings as to a particular commission or committee. If it has, you know, you can do it any one of which ways. You could say the independent redistricting commission only because it is 11 members. You could say committees with nine or more members because we do have one with nine members, economic development specifically. So you can make those findings, I think, rather easily, given the very tight quarters that we, that we have to present them in.
Okay, so I have another question in regards to the independent redistricting commission. Are they able to do the job that they are tasked with on Zoom? I mean, to understand how to draw maps and what they need to know? I mean, and maybe, maybe Gwen can give a little answer about how they're doing? Cause the last report that I heard was that it's been kind of difficult. So are they able to?
Yes, so we did have a presentation where we had a little bit of a technical difficulty. Those have been resolved and we have had four workshops. So we have another one next week. And all of those Zoom videos, with the exception of the selection, are on the city's website. But yes, I think that they are able to perform via Zoom. We do, we have had some folks that have been participating because they are workshops. So.
And I think the other thing to keep in mind that's important on that issue is that the workshops have been for, not only for the commissioners, but also for the general public to gain some familiarity with the, the programming and the tool. The commissioners themselves are not actually tasked specifically with developing their own maps. They are there to vote and to come to that ultimate conclusion on which map it is that will be adopted for the city's redistricting process. And so there are several members of the commission that is, it is pretty apparent that they really aren't that interested in drawing their own map. They're there to hear about the process and be a participant. But as far as the workshop model, it has been a hybrid for all of the workshops. And they've, those that want to participate and are submitting maps are doing so. And there are several that aren't. The other thing that I think is important is when you go back and you review the staff report for when we did establish the redistricting commission, we weren't contemplating the order being lifted in AB 361. And there were representations made and a lot of individuals that stepped up to the plate in order to participate on that commission because they knew they would be able, or they were told they would be able to participate remotely in a hybrid model. So that's just a little extra information on that.
Thank you. That, that brings a lot of clarity. Thank you.
We'll go to Dan. Do you have any questions? Bill, do you have any questions? Let's go to the public and then we'll bring it back. When Paul is paused back.
Yes, Mayor, so I do have a hand raised on Zoom. Lynn Snyder, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much, council members. Good evening. I'm Lynn Snyder and I'm speaking to this request. It would be very, very helpful to us members of the public who have been zooming into the, the meetings of the independent commission to be able to continue to do so by, by this method. And it is invaluable in allowing the transparency that is very necessary for the public to be confident in the, in the results and the work of that committee to be able to have, continue to access in this manner. So we would, I would request that, that accommodation be made, especially for the independent redistricting committee at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. No other hands are raised. I do see one in the chamber. Mr. Chapman, please come forward.
Thinking maybe I should have just stayed here the entire time. Again, Mayor, council members, I'm of a different nature than the caller that came in. I'm pretty much in the zone of council member Andriata. I believe there's a great deal of merit having a body in a group here. As I was sitting there and you were talking about the members of 11, it truly would not take a great deal of effort in order to, because right now we already have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 people here. I'm number 11. By moving this out, I don't think we're knocking down walls and making those things happen. I think there's a certain amount of energy and expectations and questions come out that just don't happen due to the process of Zoom. I thoroughly believe that we should have also their, their meetings recorded and also Zoom should be part of those meetings as well. There are people in the, in the public that maybe they still are not comfortable with what's out there. We do still have distancing. I believe the six foot distancing could happen in here, even with the largest committee that's there. I, you can wear masks. I mean, there are things that you personally can do to make that happen. My wife and I, for example, when we go to stores, if they say we'd like you to wear a mask, we've got the mask on. We're doing that for other people's safety and peace of mind. We, we feel that we're fine. We've been vaccinated. We don't have any problems with that. But getting away from this format, you could still accommodate people from the public here. And I believe until you get to the point where the public is overwhelming this room and then that becomes an issue of the distancing, we still have the overflow room that hasn't been used. There hasn't been a great deal of, whether it's winter or where we are with how we're addressing the, the issues. So for me, I, I think the option number three on, on page four of seven of the packet, which is to take no action on the resolution and continue the in-person meetings, but add Zoom to that process. There's just a great deal that does take place when you've got people to look at and what's going on. And that oftentimes for me, being here as opposed to being at home, does indeed generate a whole lot more information either to share or questions to ask. And by having that distance, the longer you do that, I think it's, the harder it is to get people back in the fold. And you have everyone here where the public can see here and understand what's going on. Thank you.
Do we have any other? Ms. Kinlan?
No, Mayor, no other hands.
All right, I'll bring it back up to the dais and I normally will save myself for last, but I'm going to do the same thing I did last time and I'm going to go first on the comments.
Just make one brief clarifying.
Go for it. Yes.
So in response to Ms. Snyder's comment and also some extent to Mr. Chapman, we are planning as staff to continue having the Zoom option available to participants who want to participate in the public process remotely. This AB, these findings respond specifically to whether the voting member can attend remotely. And so whether we get quarums at, at those types of hearings. So it is Ms. Snyder would certainly be able to participate remotely. It just deals with specifically the voting members.
So that kind of dovetails into what I was going to say. For one, whenever we're going to discuss AB 361, flexibility is not on the table. That statute is not intended to provide flexibility to any board, commission, council that is subject to the Brown Act. And the Brown Act is like sacrosanct if I'm a member of the public. It protects the public. It says, hey, you have an elected official who is conducting business on your behalf, who is making decisions using your tax dollars, who is shaping the realities of whatever matter is before them that directly impacts your life. And as such, you have a right to have access to those deliberations, to those conversations and to those individuals and to look them in the face while they do it. It's an important part of the public process of transparency, of accountability. It's what makes things like this work. It what, it's what means that I can't say, oh, hey, hey, I saw that tentative map thing on here. Hey, Paul Holly, want to talk to me real quick before I come in this meeting? And then let's just like make a pact together that we don't like it and we're going to say this and that. We can't do it because of the Brown Act. That's literally how it came around. Because before that, your electeds could just do whatever they wanted when you're not around. And those conversations don't happen in public. So for me, I think it's really important when it says, hey, I'd really like the flexibility today. It'll be at home. Okay, well, flexibility is nice, but protecting accountability and transparency is better. And, and AB 361, and maybe I feel strongly about it because I was involved in that. I get full disclosure, again, it was my day job that sponsored this bill. But I can tell you that the legislature and the governor had absolutely no desire to waive the, the purpose of the Brown Act. It was acknowledging that there's failures in it, that sometimes there might be a hurricane, not here, but somewhere. There might be a fire, there might be a flood, there might be a pandemic. There might be an actual legitimate reason that actually threats and has an imminent threat to the health and safety, and then also acknowledge that those conditions might vary. So for instance, particularly during a pandemic, what threatens my health and safety may be a different factor than what threatens Dan's health and safety, given the nature of this particular illness and what makes it not safe for you to be able to appear in public. My risks might be different, so we might have to make facts and findings that are specific to the nuance of our board, which is why there's the ability to have a nuance for those boards that are underneath you, right? I don't believe we can make those facts and findings right now. One, we're in a county where there's no mask mandate. We don't have vaccine mandates. Saying that we are enforcing socially distanced anything is, we are trying our best to, but it's not like we are having very stringent, strict anything. And to say that we're going to now make a fact and finding that there's an imminent threat or danger to an 11 body commission, when I count 10 of us with plenty of room for one to go right there, well, that's 11 in the council chambers. It's fine for us, why is it not fine for them? Are there specific nuance to that? And what says that we have to have it in this room? So if we're having it in person, I know that we want to offer Zoom or video capabilities, but there's no requirement. There is a requirement to the Brown Act and to transparency. There's no requirement that it be, it be videoed or recorded. So I think that we want to be really careful about what flex, flexibilities. That that's not what, in my mind, I am very uncomfortable making any finding based on, do we want the flexibility? Sure, we'd all love the flexibility. Is that what's right for the public? No, it's really, it's not. And so for me, I don't feel like we have any grounds to say that, yeah, our boards should be able to waive the Brown Act. Cause the thing is, is that if somebody wants to call in, you can do that under the Brown Act. They just have to notice in this, notice in advance, we have to publish it in the agenda and they have to put a, a posting on wherever they are that the public has access to them. Okay, so why can't we do that right now? Is there something that makes it where the public can't have access to that individual remotely? I don't think that since we had a very robust conversation saying we can't make those facts and findings for ourselves, that we can make that for the other bodies underneath us unless somebody has seen some circumstance that I am, you know, in my blind spot or something. Also, we have other facilities that are larger than this room. And so if we really wanted public spacing, well, then let's just move that to the pavilion. And so if we really wanted public spacing, well, then let's just move that to the pavilion at McBean. It's a huge space. Why can't we conduct some activities there? I feel like there are a lot of opportunities and options to us before we take away, as Mr. Chapman said, his ability to come and say what he wants to say at that microphone and look me in my eyes while he says it. So now I'll get off my high horse, which I think was higher than yours. I'll stop talking and you guys would like to make comments. Go for it.
Mayor, you lost me at one point in your diatribe. The legislature
Yeah.
is adamant about this and the Brown Act.
Yeah.
How come they don't follow it?
I mean, these are special questions, but that is above my pay grade, Dan. And not before us tonight, not to remain. Bring it back. Well played. Do you have any constructive things to say?
That's different than you're wanting to.
Hey, hey.
No, I don't have any comments on this. You made some very
Anyone else have any comments?
I would only say this. We all serve on a number of regional boards and each of those regional boards that I serve on has made this finding and it, to some degree, is because of distances traveled, all of that. And the absolute need for a quorum with some members that quite frankly are refusing to show up in person. And so that is the only way to guarantee that quorum. These committees are all within our city limits. We don't have that distance challenge. I don't know whether some of the individuals on any of these other committees might have some underlying conditions that make it very dangerous for them to show up in public or not. But there is a mechanism for them to call in. The challenge is that probably means they have to allow somebody to come into their home. And so then then the question for them has to become, do I want to remain on this committee? And we have to be prepared to say if they're not willing to serve under these conditions, they will step away.
We could say if they wanted to reach out in confidentiality or whatever and say, I'm uncomfortable for this reason or whatever. There are lots of rooms here. We could publicly notice a different room here where they're not among their peers. I mean, there are options to do it. And just to make a comment for the regional, that makes sense because, like I said, our county has no mask mandate. Our county is not pushing out the same rhetoric that other counties and our regional boards are. And so some of those other electeds are operating under different ordinances, under different local states of emergency, under different county states of emergency. And so they have an entirely different set of facts and findings than ours would be. And so we have to, that's why there's flexibility here.
You know, I'm not disagreeing with.
I'm just saying, just for the public, there's flexibility written into the bill, but that doesn't mean that there's flexibility for us to say, it's not an imminent threat in my environment. I'm still going to choose it. We don't have that flexibility, if that makes sense.
I hear you.
Oh, did you have anything?
No.
So obviously you guys know where I stand on it. I don't think that there, I just don't think we have a ground to stand on for it. I think we have lots of options to be able to work around the actual Brown Act to try to cater to the needs of those who might have concerns. Yeah, please do.
I wasn't even going to talk on this, but I'm going to play devil's advocate just a little bit. Because I think your logic is perfectly sound. And I'm not concerned about our committees and commissions that started their existence under the Brown Act. I'm only concerned about the redistricting committee because of the fact that they didn't start under that understanding and because we have a deadline. And I'm worried that we aren't going to get the quorums that we need. You know, people aren't going to want to invite people into their homes. And I don't know why people aren't able to attend. I don't know. I know how some of them can't, but but I am concerned about that committee. And I just think you ought to talk about that a little bit, just, you know. I don't know why the legislature didn't allow them to be an ad hoc committee under the Brown Act, because the redistricting task is an ad hoc task.
Correct.
It should have been exempt from the Brown Act. But by definition, they said it is not exempt from the Brown Act, so we get stuck with that.
Well, we tried to maneuver around that actually and put it out to the public and they didn't want it. So this is what we have.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, that's my comment.
Can I just rebut the devil's advocate? I get your concern. I agree with your concern. However, when I'm reading through the bill, which I just did when you were talking to make sure that I, you know, it's been a few months now, there's nothing in there that says, well, if you're concerned about a quorum. It just says if you're concerned about social distancing that is being right and imminent health and safety. So if if that is an actual concern that we might not get a quorum because members of that committee are concerned imminently for their health and safety, then my suggestion would be that we have something that has actual facts and findings that are legs I can stand on to proclaim why that particular commission has facts and findings that are legitimate under AB 361 that I can vote on. Otherwise, I don't think I can.
So we'll hope we have a committee.
Maybe I can find a path for us. This would have to be renewed every 30 days. Yes. Perhaps we make that exception this one time and give those folks on that committee the opportunity to state a reason for not being able to attend. And if it's valid, then we deal with that. However, we need to deal with it.
Question. So under AB 361, you are allowed to meet to decide. Now, I know it's the governing body, but if we don't have the information for it, can we extend that one time to determine, to figure out? Like if there is a way for them to express why they need to continue to meet remotely? I don't know if it can extend to that or not, but do you see what I'm saying, Christine? Like it has, for the governing body, we can, without having already made the facts and findings, you get one free meeting to say, this is what we're going to adopt and then we're going to operate under that for 30 days. Since that's not our board and we don't know the individual nuance, is there a way for us to allow that to figure it out? Or do we need to do that offline individually, bring it back to council and just decide?
Right. Well, the way that the language is written in government code 52953, it states that the legislative body is meeting to determine whether, as the result of an emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health or safety of attendees. So you would in fact be determining that it was the consequence of emergency that you were meeting to determine if you can still meet in person.
But it does allow the continuance of it every time because that has been debated, like at the state level, that you, unless it's challenged legally for now, could conceivably decide that it means that you get that one freebie in an ongoing pandemic because things change. But also it does say legislative body. So it does, it's us. It's not them. So I just don't know what facts and findings you're going to give us to be able to vote on it tonight.
Somebody could walk in and say, hey, look, I have a severe, I have emphysema. I cannot.
Are they going to say that on a publicly noticed meeting where it's like a, like personal, I mean, I don't.
No, but they could certainly inform staff that that is the condition that they're dealing with and why they they have a very big and valid concern about showing up publicly. Let me add something else. As we talked about this, our state of emergency, the city's state of emergency is still in place.
It still stands. Correct.
So the emergency, according to us, still exists.
But according to us, it doesn't because we are here. Do you see it?
I hear you.
Is it sort of like by default, not really an emergency?
Some way, I know we No, well.
we haven't taken action to remove it, but.
What we're saying is that this says imminent health and safety and takes into account social distancing. But we have 10
Yeah.
room for 11 people here tonight. So there's no difference in.
We have room for those, but not with six feet of distancing between them.
But you could put
You could.
more in and then have the overflow room and just have one person at a time coming. I mean, we have the facilities to accommodate it, is my point. And so it would be hard for me to justify, why are we saying, if it's social distancing, we have the facility to be able to accommodate social distancing and we have the barriers that cause an echo, but we have them. Right? That is another method. So we have all of the mitigation. So where is the justification for saying, because we got residents who apparently don't want to show up, we're going to make special circumstances and alter the public's right to address a body? I just have a hard time. I have a hard time.
Mark's point was valid as well. That committee started under the conditions of COVID. That committee alone.
But how does that continue?
And we have a state of emergency declared by this body still in place.
That that's not something that it provides for.
Says an emergency.
Yes, but we're under an emergency and we are not operating under it. So just because they started under it, doesn't mean that they're now exempt from present conditions. We're saying there is no imminent threat to the public's safety if we are implementing distancing to meet in public for everyone but a select group. How?
We have to adapt for present circumstances all the time.
I agree with Mark. It should be an ad hoc committee and it should be a complete non-issue, but it's not. And so I just have a really hard time waiving a very important, like pillar of the public process just because.
I generally agree with that. We're just kicking this around.
I agree. I hear what you're saying. I just give me away.
Well, I was trying to give you away.
I don't like that.
I know. I know.
I don't see how I get some stuff.
Then ultimately, let's let's get it to the bottom line. If that's what we want to do and take no action, then we risk losing some members of this committee. Are we prepared for that?
Here's a question. Do we have any alternates? Are we allowed to put alternates on there? If someone doesn't show up, can we replace them by law?
Well, I
are we allowed to replace?
Resolution isn't currently written.
Well, I know that there were more people who signed up that didn't get picked by the lottery, right? So you could go back to those
Start again.
and start again.
They've already missed a significant portion of the work, so I, they'd be behind the eight ball.
Starting over again.
Yeah. And we do have at least one member that has expressed concerns about coming back in public.
Do we know for certain they can't notice, like
No, I don't.
them meet in the city manager's council office just by themselves and video conference in? And we can notice it outside that that, just like we do for closed session? Like, why can't we make internal accommodations for that if they don't want to be in with their peers?
So I get your point, but what's the difference of if everybody else is in the room and they're in another office than them being at home?
Because no one is actually going to walk into that. The thing is, is under the current Brown Act, the Gloria Romero Act is what actually allows teleconferencing to happen. It is legal. You just have to notice it on the agenda. You're not going to be there and you have to theoretically provide access to yourself for comment, right? So if we have an individual who says, I don't want to sit with my peers. I'm uncomfortable. I don't want anyone coming to my house, so I'm not noticing that. Well, why can't we provide a facility onsite for them, notice it here?
You can, but then members of the public can walk into that room at any time.
How often does that actually happen?
That's not the point. It's their fear, their concern is that public contact. It's not this, the contact with their.
Is there concern that someone might come in and give comment in which a room, they can be 10 feet away here, the comment and that person leaves? Or is it, they don't want to sit three feet from someone for two hours?
I can't speak for them, which is why I wanted the opportunity for them to have some time to tell us their concern.
Well, have they communicated their concern? They're adults. There's been plenty of time to tell you.
It was just a general concern. The other, the other issue that we have is this was notice that it was going to be remote meetings and we do have one district that we only had one person apply for. That's it. And we, in the resolution, said that we have to have at least one person from each district. So that person has some teleconference.
So if they were absent, then we can't proceed. We can't take.
Well, I mean,
In the resolution.
Right, we would have to.
Like completely change.
The problem is, yes, yes.
That puts us out into the one and only meeting we have in December.
We could we call a special meeting for that if we needed to? Is that the individual that has the concern? Well, then I'm not that worried about it. We didn't define the quorum in the ordinance.
We said that it was the typical, you know, the majority of the body.
Be defined in a different way. Is it?
Yeah, right. If it says, if it says the quorum is the majority is member of the, then.
I don't think a Brown Act body can have the majority.
Hmm?
I do not believe that a Brown Act body can have less than a majority quorum.
No, I think you're right. I think that it's set. I personally, if, if, if an adult who has had an opportunity to privately express to city staff hasn't said the nuance of, I am in fear of my health and I don't want any contact with the public. Why are we making such large considerations?
For someone to say, I'm out.
Even if we are able to offer alternative accommodations, if they don't want to notice, are they aware that they can notice, that they can opt out? They're aware that they can say, I can teleconference under the Brown Act. I just have to let you know, you know, four days in advance, put it on a public agenda and stick a notice.
They gave a Brown Act presentation at the last.
Were they reminded of that when they said? And they still were like, no, that doesn't work for me. I want you to make special accommodations and create flexibilities that don't exist in state law so that I don't have to do that.
Yes, they said exactly that.
They said exactly that.
I'm just saying, like, I'm struggling.
No, and I think, you know, obviously whatever council wants to do with this, staff is going to follow that direction. I, when individuals came to us and reported concerns, some were via email, some were on a phone call, some were, you know, over the Zoom meeting. We didn't go into an in-depth health questionnaire as to what their personal conditions are, their vac status or any of that type of private information in order to have a better picture for you as to what their concerns are.
I'm just saying, I get wanting the flexibility. I want the flexibility. When I get to be zooming at home, I have like business on the top, yoga on the bottom, and I get to pause my camera and give my kids a kiss goodnight and they get to see me before they go to bed. When I'm here, I'm uncomfortably dressed and I miss my children three out of four Tuesdays a week. And then I'm sure you've all seen me check my phones because they like obnoxiously try to text me goodnight around this time. So I get wanting the flexibility. I would love the flexibility. That's not what we get to decide. But that's just me. I'll stop talking and see if you guys, I mean, I'm one out of five. You guys could completely override me.
I totally agree with Paul on this. I think we should question these people and see, you know, what their desires are. We, currently, we have a status as an emergency, so we do allow for some COVID restrictions, but accommodations. And, you know, we have, you know, you know, I had a lot of meetings too. I mean, you know, and some of them are Zoom. And I kind of enjoy the ones that are on Zoom. I mean, I don't enjoy them, but it's the fact that I can attend those meetings and don't have to drive all the way to Auburn or Sacramento is great.
Flexibility. You're not like, oh, my gosh, I think I'm going to die if I show up.
I, but I, no, I don't think I'm going to die. I mean, you know, I think I've been vaccinated enough to three times. I got, I'm triple vaccinated. No, I, you know, for, you know, for the near future, for at least for this next month, you know, or a couple of months, I think we should probably continue on what we're doing.
So I can make this suggestion. If it sounds like there is a hesitancy to be able to make the findings under AB 361. Our next workshop is scheduled with IRC for November 16th. That will be via Zoom. I don't believe it's a hybrid meeting. I don't believe there's any actual business for them to undertake at that meeting because it is just a workshop. The actual formal hearings don't begin until after the new year in January, so we could actually do a little deeper dive with the IRC members and come back to you the first regular meeting in December and provide you. If we, if staff feels like we can provide you with information to make the findings, then we'll do so. If not, we'll just let the item fall by the wayside.
As a Brown Act body, those workshops aren't required to be in public like they are for us.
We're doing, no, we're doing hybrid meetings and there's no action to be taken. It is only the hearings at which the adoption of the maps occurs that.
Oh, so it's just like educational for that.
Correct. It's collecting information
It's allowed.
public about communities.
It's allowed under current law for that to happen in that format. And so that gives us a little bit of time to try to figure out if there are some facts and findings that we could determine.
There could even be, I think, the possibility that if somebody stepped away, we could reconstitute that body with someone new before those actual.
Hearings begin.
We could look at that.
I like that.
Gets us there.
Person is going to undertake an education requirement. Person is going to undertake an education requirement in this collapsed time period that nobody else had to do.
Why?
You know, I mean.
It's possible. They're recorded and they're like, if, I mean, it's.
I, I certainly don't want to make more work for you. I mean, I know it's challenging. I know. I could ju, I could see the wheels spinning over there and you guys are like, oh my gosh.
That may cost more money.
She's like, I'm gonna need a lot more than that 3% COLA, y'all.
Well, I think that's, I think that's a good idea. Like, let's, you know, maybe you guys could do a little bit more exploration, find out how the group feels. Uh, and then.
All I'm asking is for facts and findings.
Yeah.
Portable under AB 361 that isn't like, I want to be in my jammies while I talk.
Right. I, I don't.
I also want to be in my jammies. That is not, I like, that's not saying anything to anyone. Be nice.
If, if you go back, this is philosophical. You go back and look for the reason for the Brown Act, which is a cigar back room. And you never transact business that way. I could never see why the, the Zoom meeting is any different than an in-person meeting.
I can tell you legislative.
From a, from a, uh,
Preventing that back room deal because you have no control over someone, whether they're on a screen or they're in front of you. However, Mr. Chapman can come up here. He can, he can sit right here and he gets to look every single one of us in our eyes every time he makes it.
He can see that better. That's my point on Zoom.
No, because on Zoom, you can stop your camera. You can have your phone down here and no one can see it. And I could be texting every single one here and being like, no, I'm a no on this. And you would have no clue. I mean, I'm just saying theoretically here when I do it, I would never do that, Dan. I'm saying that.
Wow, you are really feisty tonight.
I'm providing the, the argument back that I just feel like as a member of the public also, I really appreciate being able to see what my officials are doing in front of my face.
Yeah, I think our city attorney has come up with.
I like your, I like your.
To move forward tonight and, and, and she wore out her worry beads completely.
And I also just want to be clear too, that don't want to make the members of this commission feel like we don't value their input and their time and their, and their, and their attention to this.
Nothing to do with that. And I get why they want it.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just clarifying for myself that, you know, our, our concerns about meetings has nothing to do with, we, we appreciate them and I'm not trying to, you know, be mean, you know, or, or not care about how they, how they feel. But I like your suggestion. Thank you. That's good.
I can even tell you that me as an individual, we, we did try to have other things in here that were not adopted. This is where it landed and it's the law now. So thank you for having a solution that would make me stop talking. Okay, um, we're good, right? Okay, we will move along. We do have item 10E. Um, the good news is, is it is the last one of official business. Um, and it is, uh, staff seeking city council discussion and possible direction for staff to send a comment letter to their, um, California Citizens Redistricting Commission on some of the proposed maps that would be changing Placer County districts and receiving our input on, um, our public policy platform that is currently already in place. And we did have this brought up by Holly as a agenda item last time. So that's where this came from. And, um, our city clerk will be giving.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, as you mentioned, Councilmember Andrea requested a comment letter, um, in opposition to the proposed map visitor visualizations that, uh, divide Placer County be sent to the, uh, California Citizens Redistricting Commission. So, uh, after the last council meeting, I did send that draft letter to all council members and received one, um, in favor of sending the letter and one in not favor of sending the letter. So as our current public policy platform stands, that requires that this, uh, topic be brought back to the next city council meeting agenda. Um, and so that is what this discussion is for. So we're seeking direction. I do have, um, the map visitor visualizations on a PowerPoint if you'd like to see them. But basically the, uh, assembly districts, um, keeps us with Rockland, um, Granite Bay up to Auburn area, but it does separate us from Roseville. The congressional districts, um, has, we are grouped in with, um, Sacramento area. So we would be with Rockland and Roseville, um, down into Sacramento. And then the Senate has a very similar, uh, to what our current, um, boundaries are, but does, uh, go into Citrus Heights and Carmichael. So, um, we, I did reach out to, uh, the other jurisdictions in our area and, um, heard back from Rockland that they will be sending a letter to this body, um, requesting that Rockland remain whole and that Placer County remain whole. Um, Roseville said that they would be sending something on their own if they did choose to do so. And I didn't hear back from the county. So I'm not sure what they are doing. So if you'd like to see those maps, I can show them to you. Otherwise I open it up for your discussion and, and possible direction.
Is it possible to put those up just so the public can see them also in case they're not?
So our, our chief, uh, innovation and technology officer is going to show those.
Thank you, Jen.
So, um, this is, um, Jen, can you go to the prior screen? It'll tell us what. Yeah, there you go. So this is the congressional districts. So then you can show the map there at the next slide. Yeah. So it's a little bit hard to see, but this is the one that takes us into, uh, Sacramento area.
The purple and pink is.
Right, right.
And you can see a crossing.
Right.
The county line.
Yeah. So the red is the current county line. So then the next slide would be, thank you.
I was going to say very innovative. Thank you, Jen.
Uh, so the next slide is the senate districts. And so we are grouped in with the Sierras. So this is the one that looks most like what we currently have. We're just incorporating Citrus Heights and Carmichael in with our. And then the next is, I believe, the congressional, um, slides. No, thank you. It's fine. Thank you. Yeah. So these maps are what will be brought forward as the draft maps. So they're looking for comments right now and they will be, um, they're, they're having the public hearings right now to gather public comment.
So I'm going to ask for something that I suspect we can't do, which is do a side-by-side comparison of the current district with the proposed.
Yeah, I don't have those, but I can get those with our, um, chief innovation technology. Her GIS staff, I'm sure can do that for us.
You know, sitting back there right now going, oh, this so is not going to be worth it. I can tell it right now.
Innovative way.
She's like, if you keep saying that, I quit. Let's, let's put it out to the public for comment first and then let's bring it back to us. Does that work for everyone? Let's do that. Do we have any?
Yes, Mayor. We did receive one emailed comment from Deanna Rhodes, who, um, will be noted for the record, but she was in favor of having this be an independent process. And we do have a hand raised on Zoom, Richard Hetke. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, council members. First, let me, uh, say that I prefer that all of Placer County remain in a single congressional district, which I think was, was a primary concern at the last meeting. I've submitted public comment to the state redistricting commission to that effect. The most recent map I believed that posted on the seventh of November, uh, I believe for congressional districts placed all of Placer County in the same congressional district. However, uh, that district completely failed to meet the, uh, stated standards for compactness, grouping communities of interest and con, uh, contiguity. That being said, uh, we have an independent redistricting commission because elected officials from both our major parties will look at the same proposed map and they will both feel that the map favors the other party. Further, when state legislatures control statewide redistricting, we've ended up with states where the party receiving 55% of the votes ends up with 40% of the congressional seats. And the party receiving a minority, 45% of the votes, ends up with 60% of the congressional seats. Uh, the textbook definition of gerrymandering. Uh, example of this, uh, include North Carolina, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and there are others on both sides. The one thing that we've learned from extensive experience is that maps drawn by independent commissions will not be perfect, but they will be infinitely more appropriate and fair than maps drawn by elected officials. Please remember that any comment on a proposed map which argues political advantage or disadvantage for a political party will not be considered by the independent redistricting commission, whether it comes from electeds or from the general public. Uh, comments made during the October 26th council meeting concerning individual council members' opinions regarding perceived political bias, either of the commission or of a proposed map are both inappropriate and unhelpful. Please focus on compactness, communities of interest and contiguity as you seek to keep Placer whole in a single congressional district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any other? I don't have any other hands raised. Oh, I, excuse me, Lynn Snyder's hand just went up. Lynn, did you want to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening again. Um, in the past 10 years, there has been a significant movement of population around the state. California has lost one congressional district. And we should expect to see a new reconfiguration of districts for California. The map development and the new visualiz, visualizations by the CRC are released almost daily. There is a continued meeting, uh, tomorrow night of the Placer uh, County Redistricting, uh, Commission. It begins at six o'clock. And it is considering visualizations that, uh, were not previously discussed and do not appear to be, uh, present before you this evening. So we do not know what, and we are nowhere near a final visualization of our area. The priority of the CRC is contiguity. These are ranked required considerations. Contiguity, neighborhoods and communities of interest, integration, in integration of cities and consensus designated places to the extent practical, uh, natural and artificial boundaries and geographic compactness. That is the ranked order of consideration by the independent commission. No political party can be considered and no elected official can receive consideration from an independent redistricting commission. We ask that you keep that in mind when you consider like any other Californian to make advisory suggestions to the independent commission, but not to be promoting or accusing or asking them to consider any sort of political party result. That is not on their table. Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
So I don't have any other hands and I don't see any hands in the chamber.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for those. Those were great comments. Can we bring it back to the council now? Um, go ahead, Holly.
So in response to the public comment, I do want to, uh, remind everybody that when we talked about this last time, I actually did say that our letters cannot be a political argument. Um, I disagree a little bit that these, the, and this, and, and we need to realize that, that this last speaker was talking about that the Placer County redistricting and the state are two different things. It's not the same thing. Um, so I disagree that a, as far as the state goes, that some of the motive that's happening here is not political because I think it is, but for our purposes, our letter, our argument is not political. I think the letter that was drafted is really good. It talks about keeping Placer County whole for all the reasons why we all agree. The, the like communities, our, our lifestyle, the, you know, the geography, the people, all of that. And I, the way it was crafted, it was, it's really good. Um, so I just wanted to remind the public that, you know, we all agree that we're not making a political argument. Um, but I do, I am a hundred percent in favor of this letter of us sending it as a council. Backed by all of us. I don't know if we all agree, but I'm in favor of it, um, asking the state redistricting commission to keep Placer County hall, whole and not chop us up. So, thank you.
I do. Um, and I think, I think those comments were, were, um, with respect to the letter itself. I think it is very well written. I think it does touch on areas of concern that we all have. Um, I think the argument that, uh, Placer County and Sacramento County are not communities of interest, uh, can be very strongly made. Uh, as you all know, I sit on the, the SECOG board, which is a six county region, and I can tell you from the discussions and the votes that happened there, Sacramento's, uh, desires, wants and needs are very, very different.
Demographic, geography, on every single level.
We are, we.
Well, most levels.
Yeah. I, as you drift up closer and closer to the border, we might become more similar, similar. But this, the current visualization, especially for the congressional district, drifts down very deeply into Sacramento and, and is very concerning. So I think given all of the concerns that people have expressed, that the letter, uh, as drafted is very good and something I would be in support of sending. And, and it avoids the political altogether.
You know, you want to say something. I see it on your face.
We have to address communities of interest.
That was going to be mine.
In general, I'm supportive of the letter. I'm certainly supportive of keeping Placer together as much as possible. I do have, there's one paragraph and another paragraph that I really have problems with. First paragraph is, we see ourselves as a Sierra Nevada foothill community, along with our neighbors to the north and south. El Dorado, Nevada, Amador, Calaveras, Tuolumne, Mariposa, Plumas, Sierra, Lassen and Modoc. Okay. So you're implying a community of interest, which is the Sierra Nevada. I submit that we have very, very little community interest with a county that has a population of 3,000. Of these counties, seven of them are smaller than the city of Lincoln. We were trying to build the city of Lincoln being closer to their counties. That's fine. Um, you know, we're, we've got Placer, 400K, El Dorado, 192 in Nevada. You know, those, they're both geographically and we have a lot of the same problems with those. But I ca, I can't, this is hyperbole. To, you know, to prove the word mountain people.
Other people in Placer County would, uh, there are other jurisdictions in Placer County could make that claim better than we could.
Yeah, like.
I'm just saying, coming from this body, it would be a little discontinuous. If I were Colfax, maybe.
Uh, I think it's fair now.
And then. I mean, it's super fair.
I would also like to wordsmith.
No.
No, I, I can't. No, I, I can't, I wouldn't sport it with this in it. So that's wordsmith one. Wordsmith two is it's almost like Alyssa wrote it's very wordy. As a Sierra County.
On my list, Dan, watch out.
As a Sierra County, our u- issues are unique to the Sierra Nevada region and separate from any other part of the state. By that, we do not share any of the same issues with an urban county like Sacramento. Absolutely buy that. But it needs to end there. Because there is, even though they're in the lowlands, we have synergism with Yolo Sutter and uh. Okay, so.
And I would, I would even go so far as to argue that we do have one thing in common with Sacramento, and that is the need for the I eighty corridor to be vital and thriving.
And we do share some economic development opportunities and, I mean, there are other things, but they're low on the totem pole of communities of interest.
You know, that, one of the visualizations, they had us uh citrus heights and some, you know.
Very different.
Actually.
We are different in a lot of ways. I mean, a lot of ways, a lot more ways than we're not.
Citrus height is different from Sacramento too. That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, they're like a transitional, correct. Yeah.
But your comments are fair.
No, I, I ag- I agree with them. I, I always agree with you. Well, almost, except for when you call me wordy. So if I were me, if I weren't me, I'd agree with you.
So I could support this, those changes.
No, I agree.
Okay, um, I'm looking at this letter and I really don't agree with it at all. Um, if you want to talk about Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville as a community of interest, I agree with that. I don't see us as part of Madak, uh, Madock County, Plumas, yeah, I, I really don't at all. We are not a Sierra uh Nevada foothills community. We're a suburb of Sacramento, like it or not.
No.
Oh, yes, we are. Oh, yes, we are.
No, no. That's what Sacramento thinks.
Hold on a second. I have, wait a minute, I have my, I have my, I have, I have the floor, not everyone else. Yeah. And, and I'll ask the mayor, where do you work? You work in uh Sacramento. You don't work in uh South Lake Tahoe. So.
I wish I did, though.
No, you wish you did, but you don't. We are a suburb of Sacramento. I, you know, we have more in common with Orangeville and Granite Bay and, and, and Folsom than we do with South Lake Tahoe. I mean, and, and even to an, even try to insinuate that there's some political uh.
Which we're not in the letter.
Well, yeah, well, in the letter you're not, but I, last, but the last me, last meeting a certain councilman did. I know, know it was Paul, but the whole point of matter, but the whole point of matter is we're not. This is, this is California. We are, we have a nonpartisan uh commission. I'm sorry, we do.
Dan is on it tonight.
We are not, we are not Texas, you know, and I don't want to Texas or California here. I mean, that's, 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 that's all I have. You know, that's, we have, we have, we have, we have a state of forty million people and, and this uh nonpartisan commission has to break this down, break this state down at the fifty-two uh uh congressional districts. I'm just talking about the congressional. The other districts, you know, I would go, uh, are, are basically the same. Um, it's the same, the same reasoning. But so that means that six hundred, each, each of these congressional districts has to have seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand residents, I mean, uh, residents. Or, excuse me, occupants. Um. You know, they're, they're doing the best they can. I mean, you know, the, the try to insinuate that, that there, there, there's, there's some kind of political mumbo. I don't know what, you know, going, you know, going on here is simply not the case. And as far as this letter is concerned, if, if, if this letter, all this letter said is we should keep Lincoln, Rock, Rockland, and Roseville together, and maybe even Placer County, that's fine, include us with Nevada and Eldorado. But uh trying to insinuate that we're some kind of, uh, what is it, Sierra Nevada foothill community? I don't think so. I'm sorry.
You, you, you do, you do know that unincorporated Lincoln is the base of the Sierra foothills, right? Like, we are actually the Sierra Nevada.
You know, east to west.
Like, it's, it's actually the name of our geography.
Fine, then we could, you know, then we can include uh Orangeville and uh, you know, and, and Antelope and.
So let me ask you a question. Um, because I feel your frustration on our comments politically, but the letter doesn't incorporate it, and we just removed the parts that you had an issue with, which you might not have tracked. We have removed the parts that equate us to all of the counties that you were like, uh, no on.
We're still not, we're still not a Sierra foothill community.
We are, because we are in it.
No, we're not.
Um.
We're, 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 excuse me, we're suburb of Sacramento.
We are a suburb of Sacramento located in the Sierra Nevada foothills.
Oh, whatever.
Let me ask you a question, Bill. Like, let me ask you a question, just so we can see if this can make it work for everyone, which I think it can make it wor- work for most of us, but I'd like to make it work for everyone. So let me ask you a question. If it says what Dan proposed, which is that Placer County must remain whole and undivided, which is what is in the best favor of us as a regional economy, as a county, and as a community of interest regionally, which you even said maybe as Placer County. So give us that, all right? Like, we'll give you taking out all of those extra counties you don't like. We'll take.
It's nothing I don't like to count.
No, no, I'm saying in the letter, in the letter, right, the wording, the wording associated with this. We'll take that out. You keep keeping Placer County whole.
And.
And we take out, no, we're not going to specify South Placer. We'll just say keep Placer whole. And it just says the residents in the city of Lincoln live, work, and all shop within Placer County. I mean, that's undeniable. I think we should say we are a Sierra Nevada foothill community because it literally is the name of where we're located. I mean, like, look on a map, pull up on your phone and see where we're located. It literally says Sierra Nevada.
No, hold on, we're, we're.
Suburb of Sacramento.
We are a suburb of Sacramento, but we are in the foothills. But hold on, just like, bear with me for a second. If we just say we see ourselves as a Sierra Nevada foothill community, but we do not include the, along with our neighbors to the north and south of us, because we already said we're taking all those counties out. Um, and then we just say Placer County shares, and this is just talking about all the things Placer County shares. So we're just keeping it Placer County. And we're just talking communities of interest within Placer County. And then it just goes on to say, um, as a Sierra Nevada county, our issues are unique to Sierra Nevada region and separate from other part of our state. That is true. We already said it's hyperbolic to say we do not share any of the same issues with all of these other places. Um, we could maybe even ease the rhetoric up to say, because we do share some same issues with the urban part of Sacramento.
But I don't want to focus on that.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, is that we could just not say it. We could just not say that, and instead insert a phrase that says, we don't feel the current map selections take into account continuity, right? Just those three phrases. What was it again? Continuity, communities of interest, and I'm missing one.
And we can actually.
What is it?
We can actually request.
Compactness, there you go. Just put those three Cs in.
That they stick to the rules of redistricting.
Stick to the rules of your own rules and keep us together. And you support that. It takes out.
Wait a second, hold a second.
It takes out the statements you don't like.
I will, I will support. If you want to keep Placer County together, that's fine with me. Um, again, I think the communities of interest are Lincoln, Rockland, and uh Roseville. And if you, and, and if you want, if you want to move south into, into Sacramento County.
We're saying, we're saying we're not going to even talk to it. We're not, we're going to take out mention of other places. We're going to say we want Placer whole. Like, I'm looking at the letter, right? It literally is going to say.
Placer whole.
Placer County must remain whole and undivided. In any prospective district lines for Congress, State Senate, and Board of Equalization, the residents of the city of Lincoln live, work, and shop all within Placer County. It says, we see ourselves as a Sierra Nevada foothill community, but we do not talk about the rest of our neighbors. We're leaving all that out. And just says Placer County shares the Lake Tahoe Basin with the Nevada and Eldorado Counties. That's fair. We do. They're very similar to us. A Lake Tahoe is hugely important to the tourist economy of our three counties. Do we have, do we, do we need that part in?
I think, why don't we just take that part out?
No, I would, we're already taking it.
I do think it's fair, though, because it does talk about our, our geography. And when we're talking communities of interest, continuity and compactness, like, those are all relevant. They apply.
This talks to communities of interest.
Correct.
You know, we have a very, very different.
Water, wildland, yeah, our resources.
Urban interfaces.
Which geography is one of, as you're aware, because I know that you're very well aware of the order of, you know, community. What you take into account. Those are geographic things that matter.
So as Sierra Nevada, our issues are unique. We define them as being unique.
But we, but after it says as Sierra Nevada county, our issues are unique to Sierra Nevada region and separate from any other part of our state, we take out the next part and just say, so we urge the commission to reevaluate based on compactness, communities of interest, continuity, and to please follow the state, whatever, and sign it. And that worked for you. It works for me.
I, you know, again, um, I would take most of this out.
You, you can't get everything you want, though, Bill. We just took so many things out for you. There are things in here I don't like.
Yeah.
And I'm going to say, okay, I could eat it because there's things in here I do like. It's called negotiation, my friend.
I'm negotiating with you. And uh, I, I just, I just don't, first of all, I don't see any.
You may put the kibosh on all this.
I'm just suggesting that we take sort of all of everything that we're hearing right now and that we reframe this letter and perhaps recirculate it again under the public policy platform because I, that was a lot.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're going, you know, if voting on it right now doesn't.
I feel like you actually could, though. I feel like you have four out of five right now. We'd be like, let's sign it and send it.
I actually think.
I want him to feel comfortable, but I don't think we need it, which is why I'm trying to tell you.
Waste any more time. More time.
I, I, I go along with Christine. I think this, this is the re- rewritten.
I'm ready to vote. I'm happy. You guys do.
I'm also ready to vote if we take the amendments.
I just want to ask.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a timeout. Does anybody know what we're gonna vote on? Do we know what the letter now says?
In my mind, I do.
Yeah.
We're gonna take the letter.
That's where Christine was headed.
Move those two, those, those areas that we just talked about.
But it's literally, real, real quick, though. So i- it is what Dan suggested, where it is removing. It removes the paragraph. Well, well, let's just take the whole paragraph out. We'll take the third paragraph out. We see ourselves as a Sierra Nevada foothill community. You're welcome, Bill. Because it just talks about all of our neighbors that we don't want to talk about. So we'll just take it out. Leave the fourth paragraph as is. Leave the first sentence of the fifth paragraph, replace the second sentence of the fifth paragraph with the statement of, we urge the commission to, uh, you know, on any adopted map, prioritize communities of interest, compactness, and uh continuity. Don't feel that the current options do that in regards to Placer County and be done.
So you end the one paragraph after the word state. Then you have the paragraph urging them to.
Well, not to belabor it, but I actually think that the point.
And then leave the last closing and we're done. It's just changing two parts.
But, so, I'm not trying to like be belligerent here, but I actually think your part about the Sierra Nevadas is important because we are, Bill, I, I, with all due respect, how long have you lived here?
Four and a half years.
Okay, we've lived here our whole lives.
No, but, no, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm making. I am going to do a timeout. Stop for a minute. Hold on.
I'm making a point.
No, 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 no.
She has the floor right now. She's gonna talk. You can talk after.
All right.
Turn it off. Go.
All I was gonna say is, no disrespect to you at all, but this has always been called the, what did you?
It's the Sierra Nevada.
The Sierra Nevada, we're at, that we're, yes, it's, that's what it's called. That's what it is. And just because you, you disagree with that, doesn't change the fact that we are the gateway to the Sierra Nevadas. It, it is what it is. Billy, you can shake your head all you want, sir, but no, I.
She's still talking.
If you, if you're gonna talk to me, you're absolutely wrong.
You get your turn next. I promise you. I will call on you next, and she will not interrupt you. So don't interrupt her. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to argue that because I'm not wrong. That's what it's called. It's always been called that. You ask anybody who knows anything about this region.
All right, I'm gonna interrupt. Before I do go to you, and I will just say that I did just Google it, and it says, where are the Sierra foothills? And it does say located east of Sacramento in the foothills of the Sierra Nevada mountains, which is where we are. This region includes Amador, Calaveras, Eldorado, Mariposa, Nevada, Placer, Tuolumne, and Uba Counties. I mean, it's like actually on a map, not past it, present. But it's your turn now. But like, let's try to be polite.
I'm gonna try to be polite.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, even though I, I, you know, I think some of the other members were not polite, however, it, it doesn't matter how long I've lived here. Uh, the whole point is, we are a suburb of Sacramento. We, you know, you, you, you can say, well, on the map, it says, you know, we're the Sierra Nevada foothills. We're not. I mean, most of the people around here work someplace around here. They don't work up in um, in uh Plumas or Madock County or even uh South Lake Tahoe. Um, if, 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 if this letter was all it was gonna say is we should keep the three cities together as communities of interest, that's fine. Uh, you want to keep uh uh Placer County together and include, you know, Nevada and Eldorado, that's fine also. We gotta come up with seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand people. I don't know how they're, I don't know. I, you know, I, I don't envy the uh, the uh, um, you know, the, the redistricting committee because they're gonna have to come up with, you know, a, a map, a puzzle that's gonna turn this into fifty-two districts and.
Actually, if they took Placer, Eldorado, and Nevada, made them one district.
Yeah.
It's finished.
Yeah, oh, that, 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 that'd be fine. But I mean, you know, but saying, you know, we're so, we'll say, but I'm sorry, but saying that we're somehow, and I don't know what I'm talking about because I haven't lived here that long.
That's not what I said.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, 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 I got geography on my side. I mean, I, I.
You actually don't, because the map literally says Sierra Nevada.
I don't, I don't care. Well, you know, I, I could, you know, I could write that out. I can just cross it out if I want, if I wanted to.
All the mapmakers would not.
Geography, history, and everything else. I mean, this is, this, this is, this is a suburb. You know, it's uh today, not twenty years ago, but today, Lincoln has become a suburb.
So here's what I'm hearing.
Excuse me, Sacramento. Let me finish. And, and, and you can say anything you want, that, you know, we're the foothills of uh, of wherever. Um, you, we, we, you sierras, we're more, we're more, we got more in common here in this community now than some of the northern suburb, with, with some of the northern suburbs of Sacramento, for instance, you know, Orangeville, uh, Folsom. Um, you know, you know, we're just, you know, we're just on the outer, outer limits of, 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 of the community. I'm sorry, that, that's we're trying to, you know, trying to come up with some kind of um, some, trying to come up with some kind of um, you know, Sierra foothills district.
So listen, though, you just said that it would be fine if they did Eldorado, Nevada, and Placer, which means that what you're not liking is that in your mind somehow Sierra Nevada foothills means that we're trying to like identify ourselves as mountain folk versus being urban or a suburb, when they're not actually mutually exclusive, like they both are true. We are a suburb located in, in, in this, I don't think we need to, though. We are located in the Sierra Nevada foothills. And we've already said we're gonna take out all of the communities of interest referencing far north and only speak to Placer County as a whole, which it is important that we are identified as a Sierra Nevada foothills because one of the reasons that we have a community of interest is because we have different topography, different geography, different water, water rights, different infrastructures that keep us together as a region. And by virtue of having the snowpack and being located in the Sierra Nevada foothills, like, it's an actual geographical thing for continuity and community of interest. I understand your point about being a suburb. We're deciding not to even speak to that. We took it all out. All we're saying is please keep Placer County whole. We're a Sierra Nevada foothill region, and then just that paragraph. But we are.
Take that out, too. Take that out.
So we're, I, I understand. We've heard you. We're not talking, I think, anymore. I feel like if we're ready to move forward, I know I am. I know Holly is. I, I don't know if Dan is. I don't know if Paul is, but if so.
I still, at this moment, don't have the letter in front of me.
So why don't we do this? Based on the feedback, why don't you edit it as you think that it was, maybe send me a something, a copy, and we send it out being our, our public policy platform. And if you have four, can we send it out that way? Or do we have to bring it back to council? Because if we have to send, bring it back to council by that way, then I say we just vote on it right now, because I don't want to waste more time on it. And a four out of five vote is fine. So we don't.
Motion that uh if four out of the five council members agreed with the revisions, then we can go ahead and send it. Um, you can, you can frame your motion however you wish to.
So can we do that? And then have you send it back out? And if.
A second.
Can we get a roll call on that?
Councilmember Carl Skint.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Um.
I mean, you could still vote no on it.
Yeah, good point.
You're not binding yourself at all.
So yes, in that respect.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lawrence.
Still want to see the letter before I vote.
That's what this is. This is saying that it gives you the opportunity to see the letter, and then you can vote yes or no on it. If four out of five of us say yes, it gets sent. Otherwise, no, it's like.
And you could abstain from this vote.
I would abstain, too.
We are so, yes.
I'm almost approaching saying if any of us have a passion about sending a letter, perhaps we should do it individually and say what we need to say.
Well, we could still send our own, but I do feel like this is something that actually, like, is appropriate for us as a council to weigh in on.
Disagree.
And it really is. The, the letter literally just says, if, if Dan and I are tracking, it literally says, "We want to keep Placer whole." This is why, this is what Placer has from a geographical perspective. We're not mentioning any other counties. We decided to take that all out, and we're saying, please focus on communities of interest, compactness, continuity. So I think that it is one of those where it's like, we have taken out aggressive verbiage. There is, and I think we could even leave that out, maybe, like, like, let's just say that these are the things, like, right? Like, you're making concessions, you're making concessions, we're sticking to, these are the three things that matter to us as a community of interest. We want our pla- our, our county whole. We don't think the current maps are doing that, and just be done. It's fairly neutral.
What is interesting, when I'm going through this rabbit hole, trying to decide whether I was gonna this really doesn't fit our platform, our legislative platform? Because the legislative platform, unless you stretch protecting a city against a state. Okay, by having local control, we're concentrating really on only city-specific issues in our, I'm, I'm okay with modifying it, but we need to modify our policy if that's the case. We want to, if we want to start getting involved in stuff specifically local controlling.
Well, but that is a local control issue, like, it can be, it is a stretch. I agree, it is a stretch. I won't even argue it. I won't argue it. It's true.
So if I can interrupt here.
Please do.
Staff was looking for direction on whether we needed to update the platform. I think we've had a long enough discussion already this evening. So I'll just circulate that.
Stop talking.
Asking for individual comments.
Okay.
And then I'll put all that together and bring that back for action.
I mean, I was just
No, I, fair.
But I also then thought, thinking of Keweeve, why is it that we wanted a district for highways? In the county?
Why is it?
Yeah, think about it.
Answers.
I'm gonna pretend that that was a rhetorical question, because Gwen was like, if you guys want to keep me, you're gonna stop talking now, and I heard you, so we're gonna stop talking now?
I also noticed that they, they set the clock.
I know, the
Yeah, so ma- message message delivered, we'll continue any further discussion to a future date uncertain.
There you go.
And we'll move along. And we will go to council-initiated business. Do we have any?
I do have one.
Okay, Paul does.
And, and I think we've demonstrated the need for this tonight. As we all know, council has two and only two employees, the city manager and the city attorney. The city attorney very much deserves to have her review done. We haven't done that in a couple of years. And, and I think we owe it to her, quite frankly, so the sooner the better. We get that on the agenda and get that done. I'd appreciate it.
How does that get agendized? Is that okay, I'm all in favor for that. You done? Yeah. So, all right, I also have nothing. Information items? Anything?
Only that Lincoln is in the Sierra foothills, other than that.
Both, anyone else?
Fighting words, Bill.
Mark!
Put them both in there, that'd be fine.
I believe that our interim city manager has, the manager has something that actually is useful to be said, so I'm gonna kick it over to him.
Useful, I'm sad to say, sitting here during the meeting, it occurs to me Crosser, who's been this extraordinary contributor to this community, this is his last city council meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Say thank you to Steve for everything you've done during the time I've been here. Extraordinary, and
You're saying through our bickering tonight.
Your bickering was just fun. You, you did just fine, but thank you, Steve, for
I was thinking there'd be a second meeting on it, so I'm sorry for not, I'm sorry for not during, yeah, I thought, I thought that there'd be another one, so that's my bad, so.
We all thought that.
Yeah, so thank you very much. And all, all of those comments that we made previously about dedication and stellar performance, just put your name on it also. We thank you.
The emphasis on retention.
Ignore Dan, he is on one tonight.
Yeah, we certainly thank Steve for all his efforts and his work, and we just hope the next person is just as good. We don't think so, but, you know, hopefully he will.
We do, we do appreciate all of your dedication and know that you have carried a very, very, very heavy load, so thank you. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.
I do note that Mark lives in Fresno and drives up here, which is